We had a few little technical glitches and we just asked for your patience. For a few minutes. So I will do, I will do just that. So good morning, everybody. I will call to order this meeting of the school committee, a regular scheduled meeting in via Zoom webinar in our during our COVID times. As of nine thirty seven AM. And we will begin then with the student report. We will welcome Miss, we will welcome Evan Edler, a senior at the high school. His counterpart is also Caroline Andrews. But Ms. Andrews has class this morning and so usually we have Evan join us in the morning meetings. So Evan.
Morning, everyone. Thank you as always for having me. We're walking on to high school right now. So first of all, in terms of seniors, final college decisions, like our last ones that should be coming out tonight, actually. So if you know any seniors, hopefully they're wrapping up that end of the project, that end of the process and make sure to congratulate them that you know. We also have gotten a number of students leaving for their senior exploration project, those internships, whatever that be. The last week was the last week for most students. A few were still in the building yesterday and might be today, but after today, I believe they should be out and about in the real world and leaving WHS. We also have gotten more information about senior events. So our class officers and the administration has done a really good job of putting together a ton of senior events, given all circumstances. So everything has had to be modified greatly. So it starts with the WHS Royals comedy pageant, which will be happening soon. There'll also be stuff like a scavenger hunt and after movie night and eventually prom, which is the promenade, which will probably finish with some sort of outdoor prom. There's also other things at the school. They are now accepting designs for logos for the new red and black mascot. So Mr. Dupuis had an email encouraging all student artists to submit their ideas for what that new identity can be. COVID pool testing is still going on, but the numbers have been really, really low. There's been a lot of pushing to get more students to involve, to get involved and to be testing every morning. So definitely that's something that a lot of the administration and the PFA is working on, is trying to get that encouragement up. There's also, in terms of going back, we now have our full finalized schedule and plan for when we go back to school full time after April break, where underclassmen will go in for Monday and Tuesday, and then seniors and other people will join for the rest of the week. We have that new rotating block schedule that they figured out and currently all of the desks at the high school, all the rooms have been put so that there are double the desks, three feet apart instead of six. So we've been getting a feel for what that'll look like when we do go back full time. The last thing I have, I believe, is that student council has Night of the Arts coming up. Usually this is a big community then held at the high school, but this year we're doing it a little bit differently. So starting next week, I believe there'll be a number of student art pieces around town. We're working with local businesses to get them put in windows and there'll also be a virtual aspect. So there'll be announcements, there'll be flyers around town with QR codes and you'll be able to see a number of student art pieces online and in person. And that was a lot. So if anyone has questions about any of that, I'm definitely happy to answer. Oh, I think you're muted, Ms. Bollonez.
Thank you. Does anybody from the committee have any questions for Evan?
Poor Evan. Thank you so much for your report. I'm really interested in the explorations and the internships. Could you just give us a sense of at least among, you know, students, you know, what percentage are taking advantage of that?
Yeah, I would say about one student in every class has been my experience. So that's one out of 10, I'd say. Just for seniors, it's a bit different based on if they're taking APs or not. So I don't know how the whole grade is, but I would say a small percentage.
Thank you.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Thank you, Ms. Bollonez. Evan, I just had a quick question about the pooled testing. Do you have any sense as any talk among the students of why the participation is so low? Do you anticipate it going up? Do, are more students likely to participate when they are three feet apart versus six feet apart? Any, any chatter among the students about that?
So it's something we've talked a lot about and I genuinely don't know why more students aren't doing it. I've been doing it every morning. It's a really easy process. I think some students were concerned that it was the more invasive COVID test that someone else might administer where they go up in your brain, basically. They weren't aware that it's the Q-tip and you do it yourself, but I think they made that clear in their advertising. Also, some students said they didn't want to wake up early, but the last time is only 10 minutes before class starts. So I'm like, I was thinking, I was wondering that myself. I'm not sure why more students aren't going. I think it's a few misconceptions that there are related people organizing it are really trying to clarify in their messaging. So I'd hope to see numbers increase, but I think the way they're going, they might, it will probably stay a pretty small minority in the school. Would be my guess, unfortunately.
So I guess my follow-up would be, is there anything we can do or, you know, the adults in the community to help better communicate the message of what the testing about clearing up any of those misconceptions?
I wish there was and I don't think there is. I think they've been doing a great job so far. They've had emails, flyers put up around the school and the morning announcements. So I think it's an issue of the information gradually getting to students and then the hearts of the students being, I guess, accepting of it and encouraged.
Thanks, Evan.
Of course. Oh, Ms. Bollonez, I think you're muted again. Sorry.
Again, trying to be polite. Are there any other questions from the committee? I know that Mr. Nixon is joining us via phone for the moment. Mr. Nixon, did you have anything?
I don't for Evan this morning and I apologize. I had to get a family member into the hospital this morning and ran into some tech issues there. So I'm joining you from the car for the first part of this meeting. I apologize for that.
No worries. We understand. So I do actually have a question for you, Evan. I was wondering that in light of some of the recent community events around Asian Americans and Asians in the community, if you've heard anything from amongst fellow students or staff just about their reactions?
Yeah, definitely. I think that was something that we, it was a lot, that was talked about a lot over the past few weeks. I know the biggest example I can think of is a ton of students went to the vigil downtown. I know there's a really big upbringing student support and also students speaking there. I've also had discussions about the violence against Asian Americans in my classes. Multiple teachers have brought it up as like a safe space for people to talk and other students have chatted about it. And I think the general consensus I've gotten is just support. If that makes sense.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your update. And any other questions from the committee? For Evan? Before we move on? And seeing none. Thank you so much, Evan. We really appreciate your taking the time out of your busy morning with classes and everything. So we always appreciate your reports and giving us a bit of a pulse on what's going on in the high school. And as always, if you are welcome to stay and join us for as long as you can and same for Caroline, if she has a moment between classes. So thank you.
Thank you. My pleasure as always.
And with that, I think I will transition to Dr. Evans.
Sure. Happy to, happy to take on this responsibility of school committee reorganization. As some of you may know, by policy, the school committee in the first meeting following the town election reorganizes to elect a chair and a vice chair. And I will help facilitate the portion for the election of the chair. Once a chair has been elected, then the chair will take over and organize the selection of the vice chair. Before I open it up for nominations for chair, I'd just like to welcome two new school committee members to the group. Seamus Brady and Tom Hopcroft are here with us today. Thank you very much. And thank you for your willingness to serve. This is an incredible responsibility to help support the education of nearly 5,000 students in Winchester. And we very much appreciate the hard work of our school committee members and just wanted to thank you in advance for your willingness to participate in this process. At this time, I will open the group to nominations for chair. Generally, a past practice has been, although this is not necessarily part of the policy, that the chair is elected and serves for one year unless there are extenuating circumstances. The vice chair generally becomes the chair, although not always. That has been our past practice in previous school committees. But the, all five members are eligible to service chair. So at this time, I would open for nominations of chair. I will take as many nominations as there are presented by members. And the ones that are seconded will then go forward for a vote. So at this time, are there any nominations for chair? I see Chris Nixon's hand up.
I would be happy to nominate Karen Mariamo-Bollonez for chair.
Okay, thank you very much. I see Seamus's hand up. Seamus, do you also have another nomination?
Chris beat me to it. I was gonna nominate Karen. So I'll second his nomination.
It's been moved and seconded to elect Karen Bollonez for chair of the Winchester School Committee. Are there any further nominations? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote because this is a Zoom and I will start with Mr. Nixon. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
And Ms. Bollonez. Aye. Having passed by a vote of five to zero, congratulations. I will now turn the meeting back over to Karen. Before she takes on the task of helping the committee to select a vice chair, I would like to say it has been an extreme pleasure in the last year to work with Brian Vernalia and Karen as chair and vice chair. They've been incredibly dedicated and we meet or speak every day and have for, you know, more than the last year. And I know that Karen will put the same diligence in as chair. So thank you again, Karen, for your willingness to serve. And I will turn it over to you to elect a vice chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your support. I will just now move us on to the business of selecting our vice chair and I would just open it up to the floor. Do we have any nominations for the vice chair of the committee? And I see Mr. Nixon's hand raised, so.
I'd be happy to nominate Michelle Bergstrom as vice chair.
We have a nomination for Ms. Bergstrom. Do we have any other nominations? For vice chair, please?
I'll just second the nomination of Ms. Bergstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. I appreciate that. And now we will proceed to a roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. And so, thank you very much. We have our vice chair as Ms. Bergstrom this year. All right. And I guess in normal times, I believe we would have had some sort of ceremonial switching of seats at the table at Parkhurst. But in COVID times, I will just simply say thank you and that I'm looking forward to continuing to serve the community and the committee and the administration over the course of this next year. And I would like to welcome Mr. Hopcroft and Mr. Brady. Thank you so much for your service and your willingness to serve. And as this is our first meeting with the new committee and chair and vice chair, then I would just ask for the public's patience and the committee's patience too. For your patience and grace while we work out some of the kinks in the system over to this day. So, and with that, I will move us on to the schedule for this morning. So. First order of business will be public comment after our reorganization and call and student report and everything, which we have already completed. And then we will move on to reports and discussion items, the first of which is a K through five literacy update. We will then have a COVID-19 return to school update. We will have a Parkhurst preschool plan update and then a summer programs update. And finally, we will complete the reports and discussion items with the first reading of the updated policy for IHBEA. Then we will move on to action items, which consist of a vote to approve handbook revisions and then a vote to approve minutes from the month of March. Then we will proceed to a chair report, superintendent report, and we will touch on future agenda items next and next meeting dates. So I guess at this point, we will proceed with public comment. I will ask Ms. Bergstrom to assist with public comment. And public com, I will just read the statement. Public comment shall be for 20 minutes and each speaker will be allowed three minutes. So any member of the public wishing to speak shall identify themselves by name and with their address. And I would just remind you that public comment is not a discussion, a debate or a dialogue between members of the public and the committee. And it is the citizens' opportunity to express their opinion on issues of school committee business and under our delegation or under our authority. The committee is not under any obligation to respond to comments. And with that, I will just comment that I will follow the practice of the prior committee in which first I will lower all the digital hands of people who are willing to speak. And when we are ready, please feel free to raise your digital hand. So.
Would you like me to elevate speakers for you, Ms. Bollonez?
Yes. Could you go ahead and do that?
Sure. First, we're going to welcome Susan Verdicchio. I'm going to allow you to talk, Ms. Verdicchio.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah, loud and clear.
Great. Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning on this historic occasion and congratulations to the new chair and vice chair. I just wanted to join you in my capacity as select board chair to alert you to something that's on the warrant for the Springtown meeting that's coming up very shortly. This was something that has been discussed in previous years. And this year, Article Five would amend the language in the town bylaws around the town annual election date to allow, but not require, that the election be held on a Saturday. I'll read you just the snippet that is operative. It says that the annual town election to fill elected offices, et cetera, shall be held on the last Tuesday or the last or second to last Saturday of March, as determined by the select board, no later than December 1st of the preceding year. So this is an option to allow some flexibility so that in years like this year, when there are two elections in a given year, you can have the town election on a day when school is not in session. And, you know, the, whatever disruption it causes to have voting going on in the school would be avoided. And would also allow the town clerk to do something that she has tried, I think, or thought about in the past, which would be to consolidate and move some of the, some or all of the precincts to the high school or to McCall, to a bigger building. If that seemed to be more convenient or affordable. Perhaps maybe in a, in a year when there's a construction project going on in one of the schools or when there's, you know, heaven forbid, another pandemic. So I did speak with the superintendent and finance and operations director and they've said they'd be happy to, you know, collaborate and work with the town to do something along those lines to, to work out, you know, what schools or the high school would work on a Saturday. But I realized that I had neglected to even really mention it to the school committee. I hope that the school committee would consider supporting this. At the first meeting of town meeting, the first session is set for April 26th. And this, I thought I would jump on the chance of just alerting you to this. And I would hope that you could take a vote to support this. Either, you know, at a meeting this month or, or at a, at a short session, a short meeting of the school committee before, just right before the town meeting session on the 26th. So I thank you for the opportunity and if you want to reach out to me with any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Pick a point of, point of information through the chair?
Yes.
We don't typically get into good dialogue during public comment, but given that it's the chair of the select board presenting, I just had a question. Do we know what the threshold is on this article? Is it a simple majority? Is it two-thirds or 90%?
I believe it's a majority. That's a very good question. I will check.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, I will move to the next comment, which is Rebecca Pfeiffer Cummings and I will elevate her to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Rebecca Pfeiffer Cummings, 22 Highland Street. I'm here representing the parent group that has come together out of a shared concern regarding the district's approach to dyslexia and early literacy. I'm here today to represent, oops. In an effort to be respectful of the school committee's time, we've decided not to speak in mass numbers at this meeting and instead we've written a summary of our concerns. I'd like to ask the chair for an extension of the three-minute limit by about 30 seconds so I could share the summary as one speaker.
Granted.
Thank you very much. As many of you have heard during the public comment period. As many of you have heard during the public comment period of the January 26th school committee meeting, this systemic problem has had a disproportionate and often devastating impact on many students and families in our community, including but not limited to students with dyslexia. Members of our community, including students, shared their stories in a video called Voices of Winchester, available on YouTube, that we recommend the school committee watch if you've not already done so. On behalf of the group, we want to welcome Seamus Brady and Tom Hopcroft to their first official meeting and congratulate them on their election. As you know, early literacy is on the agenda, and we look forward to hearing how the administration and school committee will address the concerns outlined in our January 6th letter and our February 12th response to the administration's literacy update. We won't summarize the letters in their entirety, but here are some of the main themes. The first is we need early screening and early identification. We learned at the curriculum subcommittee meeting that the final dyslexia screener has not yet been selected, and there is no set date when universal screening will start. We hope to hear at this meeting that there has been much more progress on this front. Second, the interventions our students receive in both Tier Two and Tier Three should be evidence and research-based. Third, it's critical that the district use research validated tools to gather data about our students in the five areas of reading. Without this data, teachers are not able to pinpoint the gaps in students' foundational reading skills and differentiate instruction accordingly. Fourth, we need to invest more in teacher training and knowledge. Some of our amazing educators do not know about the science of reading because it was not taught in their teacher prep programs or professional development. New hires and current staff should participate in comprehensive early literacy training based on the current reading, current reading science. Additionally, all early reading support and special education teachers should be trained and or certified in evidence-based programs and methodologies. Finally, we need to shift our core instruction so it's aligned with the science of reading and meets the federal standards and state guidelines for evidence-based early literacy. As part of this, we need to eliminate practices and materials that encourage guessing at unknown words using pictures, context, and other clues. These are some of the main themes. I also wanted to briefly stress what we are not asking for. We're not advocating for a one-size-fits-all model, and we're not advocating for a phonics-only approach, as some critics claim. The science of reading is not just phonemic awareness and phonics. It's also vocabulary, fluency, and comprehension, and it's also oral and written language development. Some will say, while our school district performs in the top percentile in MCAS, it's true that Winchester may be a high-performing district on average. However, the MCAS data also suggests there are numerous students who are struggling with ELA skills. The data also doesn't reflect the vast amount of resources families spend on private tutoring to prevent their children from falling behind. More to the point, just because we are in a district that has a high percentage of very academically successful students does not relieve the district of its obligation to provide instruction that is aligned with research and that meets the needs of all learners. In conclusion, we would like to ask again to be part of the dialogue around early literacy. Specifically, we are asking for the creation of a literacy action team made up of teachers, administrators, parents, and school committee members to look at these issues closely. We have a great opportunity here in Winchester to be at the forefront of this issue, to embrace the evidence, and to proactively shift our practices to ensure all of our students thrive. Let's not delay any longer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cummings. I will lower your hand and I will allow Ms. Nicole Gudera. Pardon me if I pronounce that incorrectly.
That's okay, Karen. Good morning. Nicole Gudara, 5 Aquinas Path. Thank you for the opportunity to make public comment. My comment is regarding the return-to-school approach and the process. So for background, we have a fifth grader who is at VO, and he has spent all of his elementary school years there prior to COVID. Due to the ever-changing risks, we decided to keep our son remote, all the while thinking that if things improved, we'd make a change request. And while we understood there was no guarantee that the request would be granted, we did hope that there would be some special considerations made for fifth graders since it's their last year in elementary school. There is precedence for this, given that when the schools were redistrict several years ago, special accommodations were in fact made for fifth graders. And while I appreciate this group's attempt to manage what's been a challenging situation, we don't feel that the approach has been all that effective. We understand that the school committee agreed to a plan, but if COVID's taught us anything, it's taught us that we need to be flexible and nimble. Several months ago, Dr. Evans' note indicated that we were not going to be bringing all students back in person. Understand that that changed due to Governor Baker's mandate. And so, you know, our comment really is around what scenario planning was done to sort of expect the unexpected. I did ask and have had a conversation with Dr. Evans about transparency around understanding the data and the numbers and how many, in fact, students were asked to come back. How many fifth grade students in particular? While I appreciate that there was a district-wide class formed, our question is centered around what other scenarios were considered to get more kids back into school using the current class teachers versus hiring a new teacher at Morocco in this instance. So really, my appeal today is really just to sort of make public comment about the process, also to ask for further consideration being made to the different scenarios. The media has covered that other towns, even as last fall, indicates that other towns have actually looked at climate-controlled tents to get more students back into school. And to my knowledge, those kinds of scenarios were not considered as part of your planning. So, you know, the goal ultimately is to get more kids back in using, using the current teachers that we have versus hiring new. And I think this, this potential solution could address not just the fifth graders who want to go back to their home school, but also some of the other students that want to go back to their home school. I, the last point I'll make and I'll close is, you know, when we were thinking there was hybrid and remote, we were concerned about inclusivity. When you think about it from our perspective, our son now is part of the other population that's not back in school, since the majority of the kids are back in school. And so that's a concern for us. And so I have asked Dr. Evans to consider a waitlist also as a possible alternative, should there be students that are currently in school that choose to leave and what that process looks like. And so I'm asking for greater transparency into the actual numbers and to some of the details around the process and the approach. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gudera. Are there any further comments from the public? And I could, I will ask for confirmation from the rest of the committee, seeing none. Then I will close public comment at this time. And we will move on to our next order of business, which consists of the reports and discussion items. First up is the K through five literacy update. And I will ask Ms. Bergstrom to elevate Ms. Katie Malone.
So could someone please give me screen sharing so I can pull up the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Thank you.
I believe that is set for you now, Ms. Malone.
Thank you. Can everyone see it now? Great. Good morning, everyone. Thank you so much for having us back. Welcome to Tom and Seamus. We're here to give some updates from some follow-up questions we had from the school committee on our literacy presentation three or four meetings ago. Feel free to hop in along the way if you have questions as we go or wait till the end, whatever you're more comfortable with. And as Karen noted, Katie Malone is here, and she's happy to jump in and answer any questions as well. And if there are any pieces around special education, Pam's happy to chime in. This is always really a group effort in our work around this. So just to remind everyone what our kind of big umbrella goals are around the literacy. Our really number one goal is to inspire, engage, and motivate our students to really have this deep love of learning for reading because their excitement is really what catapults them into us being to differentiate and support their literacy. Another large goal we're working on, which we'll talk about, is our update to our comprehensive literacy program. As always, everybody who knows the district knows how much we love professional development and how that's such a focal point for us. So we will continue with emphasizing the essential components of reading instruction and that interconnectedness between reading, writing, word study, thinking. How do we connect all those pieces for our students? We're looking to redesign, and you'll hear about that a little bit later. We're doing some, we're piloting and launching a program to offer some more support this summer, particularly just in relation to the pandemic. And the DESI guidelines have been released around the screeners, which we've talked about before. We'll talk a little bit about that, but also we're waiting for their final guidelines around literacy in general to build our larger supports. And as always, just continuing to examine and adjust our work in all of our areas as we're often here updating on something. So kind of just to give a background of where we've been, our major work and initiatives over the past six or seven years. Curriculum alignment, this has been huge to really not think about coming from a specific program base for any of our content areas or any textbook, but really making sure that we're aligned with the state frameworks, the standards, and really making sure that we've identified what our students will know and be able to do. Big focus on embedding the social and emotional, making connections, making meaning for students, reinforcing that joy of reading. The units of study, we've been focusing on the teaching of reading and writing in the balanced literacy across, again, both our reading and writing word study programs, all of the state standards. In terms of special education, our big focus areas have been really, we've rolled out and now continuing to support and improve upon our co-teaching as well as sometimes our push-in in classroom support. And the expansion and strengthening of our language-based learning disabilities programs, grades three through 12. Pam's happy to speak to that. She's done a phenomenal job, really working on reinforcing those programs and building them out more. Again, we've done intensive professional development. We've had Landmark as kind of an ongoing consultation for years and also working with all the different components of literacy and bringing in different experts, Melissa Orkin, other people from other programs that have been brought in to kind of help support when we have specialized areas of needs as well as support for all of our teachers. And we've really expanded on the teacher coaching. So our early literacy department has morphed some of the roles from reading teachers or literacy teachers to some of those teachers being coaches or some of them being coaches for part of their schedule so that we can continue to grow all of our teachers with both professional development that happens, you know, after school and over the summers, but also that coaching model is Judy calls it allows us to have kind of that just-in-time support that is right in the classroom and readily what they're working on. The same pieces we've been doing with the SEL coaches, with our technology coaches, that's really been our focus of how to support teachers in an ongoing way. So what is, you know, all research tells you that, you know, when you shift and you change, it takes three to five years to see the results of your change. So what have we seen over the past couple of years with those shifts? When we look at, this is the DART, I know we've talked about this before. That's the DESI tool that allows you to compare your district's performance with like districts. And so this is just a little snapshot of where we are in terms of the DART report with other districts that are similar to ours. And as we see our students, when we look at kind of our all students across our grades, we see that in both ELA and math, that our students do particularly well in grades three through eight. And in ELA, we see that from all of our like districts, our students score overall the highest. This just gives us the visual of kind of how we've grown. So again, our goal always is not to be measuring against other districts. We know that's really how the DESI ranks things, but what we always want to do is keep improving ourselves and how we're doing with the standards. So we're pleased to see that if you look at Winchester from 2017 to 2019, we've made growth, you know, 67 to 74% to 87%. And these are our students meeting or exceeding expectations. So we see the growth with the changes around co-teaching, with the professional development. We see the results over three years, the past three years of student data. Also, of course, we look at our students with disabilities. And again, back to some of our big changes with co-teaching and push-in support in our classrooms as well as the growth of the LBLD programs and what Pam and the special ed team and teachers have really done around this has been phenomenal. So we've seen 29 points percent of growth in our students over the last three years. And I think as Judy has noted before, our elementary LBLD program is at Vincent Owen, and Vincent Owen scores in the 99th percentile and along with several other of our elementary schools is repeatedly recognized as a school of distinction by the DESI. And this just gives you a picture overall of our students in comparison to the state for grades three through eight. As we know, third grade is a really big year for students in terms of literacy. And we talk about the shift of learning to read and reading to learn, and when does that happen and what do we see? But it's also important to us, you know, how students continue to do. So we continue to try to measure how that's going, obviously, through the middle school years and continue to work with students at different levels. So we've happy to see that we've seen some growth in that area as well. This is again the same thing around our students with disabilities, being able to see across all grades three through eight that we're able to see that incremental growth continue from meeting and exceeding expectations. Particularly, sorry if I didn't make this clear, in these graphs, you know, the gray line underneath is the state and the yellow line is where in Winchester is performing. What's next? So to some of the questions that we've had about what are we, what are we doing? What are the next things that we're working on? As with everything in the district, we're never complacent, we're never satisfied. We keep assessing where we are and determining what makes the most sense to move forward. And sometimes this is for changes, and sometimes this is for what's working and we don't want to change. We always ask the teachers after any PD, you know, for a two plus two, what were the things that really worked? We should absolutely not adjust, and what are two areas that we can adjust and grow? So as we always look at our data, both MCAS and our internal data, we constantly ask also what is working so that we are sure to continue with those practices. So really what we see in our data is continued growth. Both in our MCAS data, what we see in our data in the district and what we hear from the teachers, it's exciting to hear that, you know, when we talk with the kindergarten teachers and they say the students are so excited, they see themselves as readers that they're already able, even if they're not totally reading a book yet, they're excited to be able to pick it up and to be able to do all the things we talk about appropriate, that age level of page orientation and letter recognition and those pieces of being excited around the readings. So those things that we know are both working through qualitative and quantitative data, we want to keep doing those pieces. With the screeners, I know there's been a lot of talk about the screeners. So the DESI, as we shared last time, they released later this fall, what the approved as we shared last time, they released later this fall, what the approved screeners were. So lots of districts have been trying out different screeners as we shared with you last time, you know, we're working with the dibbles. We've used it before in the district. All kindergartners have received the dibbles, which is one of the approved screeners. However, as a district, we were very careful not to choose a screener that not only we spent the funding on, but also all the time, you know, how precious our PD time is with teachers and we don't have nearly enough. We wanted to make sure that when we really do this training and embed all of this, that it's an approved screener from the DESI. So now that we have that, there is a group that's working on it and Katie would be happy to answer more questions. She's working closely with that group leading that. And they're looking at three different screeners. And that's listed here, the star dibbles and Lexia Rapid. As always, if we find after we implement something that we need to adjust or change something, we even once we pick, if we find it's not working for our students, we will adjust. But the goal of that committee is this spring, by the spring, that they will be choosing a screener that then we will purchase and implement in the fall. And again, currently we have been implementing the dibbles, but whatever we agree upon as our semi-permanent screener to try that across all of the areas, then we will bring feedback on how that's going with that screener. In the larger umbrella of the draft guidelines from the DESI, we will be forming a group to update our literacy plan. Again, we always want to make sure that before we go down a path of doing something that we have what the final guidelines are from DESI. Because as you can see, even just with their latest updates around MCAS, it changes every couple of weeks. And we certainly don't want people to be having that effect of having to shift and change before we've even fully implemented. So we look forward to their final guidelines. We will have mandated professional development. For all of our literacy specialists and coaches, as well as our special education teachers around specific learning disabilities, many of these people have already this training, but not all. So we will be working on a plan to roll that out. But in addition to which, as always, when we bring in our professional development and we offer both specialized and broader PD in both of those areas, we'll always allow for staff that just choose to want to be part of something, even if they're not designated as mandatory training. We want people to continue to grow and learn. We will continue, we started extended day support for our students in need. We're continuing to try to work with that, even though we're back on a full schedule now. But also in terms of the summer, we'll talk a little bit about that. We have some summer programs coming up. Pam is happy to talk a little bit more, if you'd like about. There is, she's doing an LBLD program evaluation so that we can get feedback on that program and what is, again, what's working and what do we need to adjust? And we will plan action steps for next year. And then part of what the DESI always does in every district, it's called tiered focused monitoring now. And they do those in three different areas regularly. Special education, English language learners and civil rights. And it just so happens that we're in this three-year process again right now. So we're working on our self-assessments around these areas. And sometimes that helps to guide us to on changes that we want to adjust. And then they come in and do an evaluation next year after we've done our self-assessment. And sometimes those evaluations help to guide us in some changes we want me way may make or may see as something that's an area of growth or something we want to again, make sure that we don't just continue doing because it's working. So that's kind of the updates on where we are from our last discussion. And again, we will, you know, have more information on what specific screener we're using. And when we're looking for a group to put together around our larger literacy plan beyond just the screener piece. But I'm happy to answer questions, Pam and Katie as well. Please feel free to share. Sure. So this one is
I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt. Just go back one. I think you just missed one slide. The one before this, yeah.
Oh, sorry. The, so again, I think I talked about some of this, though, we do take the feedback from our tiered monitoring. And as we shared, we are going to be providing specialized training to our reading specialist. And we already have a curriculum subcommittee that's been in place the last month or so. We did talk about literacy and PBA's last meeting. And we're talking about diverse tax and social studies coming up in our meeting this month.
Thank you, Dr. Ellen Emma. And with that, I will now open this up to taking questions from the committee to Dr. Ellen Emma, Dr. Ellen Emma, or Ms. Malone, or Dr. Evans. And I would just ask you to please raise your digital hand and I will look around the room as best I can with Ms. Bergstrom's help and we will call on you as.
Ms. Bollinase, could we take the, the presentation down so that we could see each other as well?
Ah, yes, a good point.
Thank you. Mr. Brady. Sorry about that little delay.
No worries. Thanks so much. And thank you, Jen, for that presentation. That was great. It gives us a nice scope of where we're at and where we're going. So I appreciate all your work and putting that together. Just a few questions. You, you touched on it towards the end, the specialized training for the reading specialist, OG Wilson. Is that going to be done for special education teachers as well? And could you just give me a sense of how many folks in the district do we currently have trained in something at that level, Wilson, OG, Lynda Mood Bell? And then what's our goal? What are we aiming for, for the number of folks who are trained in something that, you know, is more intensive, more time intensive? Though of course I would argue is well, well worth the investment.
Right. So we, Pam can probably talk a little bit more specifically around special ed teachers, but certainly we have some people that have training in the district already. And Katie can probably talk more specifically also about our literacy teachers. Our goal is that all of the reading specialists are trained. And if you see our timeline is through 2024. A lot of this is, as you said, intensive. And so it needs to align with the teacher's schedule or fit into our professional development. Obviously, we can't work outside of the contract with expectations for people. So we anticipate it'll probably take three or four years to do that. Our goal is to try to have people trained in different areas as we find different programs work better with different students. And sometimes we start with one and find that that one isn't effective. So we want to make sure that we have a variety, like Pam will probably talk about, we also have people trained in RAVOS. So I think we have, and Katie correct me, I forget where we are this year after all the comings and goings, but we have 16 or 17, I believe, literacy specialists in the district.
Yep. At the elementary level, we have 15 and, and there's two at the secondary level.
And several of them already have specialized training, right, Katie?
Yes.
And then Pam can probably speak more to the special ed numbers of how many there are and how much training they already have.
Yep. So the one data point, Tom and Seamus, welcome to this conversation. I am delighted actually that we're going to be training more people. It's near and dear to my heart. So this is wonderful. I, I feel that, I don't mean to not include Karen or Chris or Michelle in the conversation, but they've heard this kind of ad nauseam from me for a while. So I, the one data point that I didn't bring, I have all sorts of pieces of paper in front of me today, Seamus, the one data point where the numbers with the certification. But we're constantly, constantly looking to make sure that the staff in front of the students have the right certifications and equally have a broad depth of knowledge. It is kind of an over assumption, if such a word exists, that there's a one size fits all. So I, Wilson works great for a lot of kids, but not every kid. Lynda Mood Bell, that the lips training and verbalizing and visualizing their different trainings were great for certain profiles of kids. So the other, other thing is to, Jen will sometimes talk about going deep. We need to go deep and wide and really look at kind of a systematic approach to this. So I'm really excited about, you know, who else can we share the wealth with, with this conversation? And it's exciting.
Thank you very much. And I'm, I'm excited to, those trainings are near and dear to my heart as a special educator. And yeah, whenever you get a chance, I would love to just have those numbers of how many specialized teachers are trained. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you very much. And I see Mr. Hopcroft has question now.
Thanks. Sorry, I don't have a digital hand. So I don't know where, where that control is, but it doesn't seem to be on this, this screen. So I just wanted to, if I could, and apologies if this has been covered in prior meetings, but just for the sake of bringing me up to speed, I was hoping we could go up to like a 50,000 or 100,000 foot level. And, and I guess, and by the way, some of this could also be a follow-up. I don't, I'm not looking to put anyone on the spot, but I have a bunch of questions that I wrote down. Starting with, wanted to understand sort of what our, as a district assessment of where we were, you know, is. So, you know, where are we coming from and how, how does our, what is our perception of whether there was a problem? And how that aligns with what we've been hearing from the community? Cause I'm not entirely certain that we're all solving the same problem or, or, or not. So, so as a first question is, and this goes back, I know it's history, but how do we assess where we were several years back, when the, the events or non-events were happening that people have been talking about a lot? Next, curious how, you know, what has changed since then? And I understand stuff has changed. We've been beta testing and things, but just wondering how that's been going. I think some of that was in the numbers, but a lot of the numbers are aggregate, but wondering with regard to the, to those kids. You know, the, the process going forward, we have some of that here, curious to understand more about the group that we're going to put together to, to work that process, I guess. And what kind of composition it would have, you know, what kind of community engagement, transparency, et cetera, we're looking at. Again, this may be more than we, than, than is appropriate for right now. So I'm happy to take this offline as a follow-up. But I'm just trying to kind of understand, you know, where we were, are we all on the same problem, you know, what's been done? Cause I think a lot has been done. You know, what are the preliminary results of that showing? And how is that informing our process moving forward?
So I'm happy if people would like to kind of give a overview on some of those. And then Tom, happy to follow up if you want to have more discussions around it. You could even, you know, do a zoom with Katie, Pam and I. I, I think kind of that big, like you say, zooming out. I think we have two different things that we're hearing questions and concerns around that are very interconnected. Which is the special ed piece as well as the curriculum piece. So certainly we have a, you know, a curriculum that is for all, that is based on the state standards, which is our mission and our goal for every student to be able to achieve those. And then what we have is lots of practices because right, the goal of special ed is for them to be able to access the curriculum, right? That's, that's the mission of special ed and the services that they offer. So what we, kind of where we're coming from is when we looked systematically where we were with some of these pieces for that big picture. A couple of things cropped up that is when you go back to our slide on kind of what's changed. So a lot of special education was happening outside of the regular classroom, which is really a barrier to students being able to access the curriculum, which is the whole goal. So we really made a mission around a couple of different things. One was about co-teaching and at the very least push-in services. So students were in the classroom, oftentimes with two trained professionals to be able to receive the services to get to and whatever accommodations. And by the way, we don't limit accommodations just to special education students. We believe in differentiation and diverse learners. And I make accommodations for myself. And other people probably make them for me too. So really thinking about our classrooms as places that do that and having the support system for that to be able to happen. When students are still struggling, we recognize we had some areas of growth in some of our programs as well. And that's kind of what we were talking about, kind of with that big picture view of just how we've improved the LBLD programming. Both with professional development, with personnel, with what the structure of the program looks like, K-12. And how we think about providing services for students that are identified and needing something beyond what we can do in the classroom or just with extended day interventions. So that's kind of the big picture of where we've been coming from. Both that curriculum piece of getting very focused on our core of getting to those standards. And that that's our mission and around literacy, that it includes reading and writing and speaking, speaking and listening, word study, phonics, phonemic awareness, comprehension, fluency, all of those pieces are in the standards and making sure that that's our mission. And then saying, what kind of structures do we need to be able to support that? So that's why we've shifted some of our structures to be able to support that. In terms of the group going forward. So again, I think, so there's definitely a group that we'll have, which is around our larger literacy plan. And as we do with many of our groups, we have, you know, parent representation, school committee representation, a wide variety of educators, different grades, special ed, non-special ed, like our reading specialist, obviously in this case, but also like our EL teachers. So we try to do a very broad group so we can get as many perspectives as possible. So I think that goes to your question a little bit around the group and what they'll do. I think I'll say from the curriculum piece, from the other kind of concerns that I think that we're hearing are around special education. And those things I would say really need to work through the PAC and through Pam and through special ed, because there's a lot of, obviously, as we all know, legal pieces, expectations that are the process that we must follow. So concerns that are raised around that, not that we're not all happy to work on it, but it really needs to follow that process. So it's going through the appropriate channels so that we're meeting all of our legal obligations and making sure that the rights of the families and the expectations of the state on what we're doing, that all of those pieces are met. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I, I'm just trying to rationalize two sort of adjacent conversations that that, that feel like they may be saying the same thing, or they may be tackling two slightly different issues or problems. But I, but I'll take this as, this is going to be a lot more conversation than this. So I'll, I'll take this offline. So thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bergstrom?
I had two quick follow-up questions. One is for Ms. Gerard and it's a follow-up to what Dr. Ellen Emma was just talking about. Can you talk a little bit about the LBLD program and how you have been engaged with PAC on some of these issues and over the last year?
Sure. Michelle, I'm not really certain where to start with that because I kind of feel like I'm on speed dial with you. because I kind of feel like I'm on speed dial with you and the other board members in terms of making sure that, you know, we're looking at kind of the umbrella and the scope. But I know we're committed to kids. We're committed to having this be successful. So I've been really struck lately, a really good friend of mine just gave me a new poster because I've been quoting this quote, and it's on my, on my door. So I'm sorry if I look like I'm moving over. But do the best you can until you know better. And then when you know better, do better. And I think that's kind of where, I, I think it just sums up perfectly for me kind of where we've been in this journey. So similarly to what Jen has been talking about, when I got here several years ago, part of the initiative was to really look at our language-based programming and to be thinking about how could we improve the experience, school experience, academic. When I talk about academic, I want to bring in kind of the, the social emotional because you really can't have one without the other. So how do these go together? So we've done a lot of really trying to improve the instruction and the access points. What do we want our programming to look like? Where do we want it to go? How do we, how do we know that we've got, got to where we want it to be? And so we focused on our elementary program and creating grade standards. So we have a third, fourth and fifth grade. We have an LBLD program at VO with a third, fourth and fifth grade. Then we carry that up to sixth, seventh and eighth. And then we have it at the high school. High school is a little bit different, given the structure of the, the student's schedule rather than the grade level, looking at that. But every year we come back and we do, I do an analysis of what are the students' needs that are in front of us? And what do we need to be thinking about for ongoing program development? And that comes back to, do we need to create a different, different programming needs? Do we need to expand up or down? Do we need to have different curriculum materials? What are our progress monitoring and our assessments? Are they current? Are they giving us the information that we want? And then, and I, I, Michelle, I feel funny because I feel like I'm, I'm like telling you things that I've already been like, so Michelle, I have another idea. But we've really been looking at also the vertical alignment so that the students aren't missing steps. Because, and when I say that, I'm thinking kind of the fifth to sixth grade transition. We don't want downtime. We want when a student is leaving, that we know exactly where to start. And so that our curriculum and our experiences carry right through. We also are looking to promote, I'm going to step off of the inclusion platform for just a second and talk about inclusion goes also into kind of belonging, right? It's not just have I given an inclusion opportunity, but have I made experiences where students are belonging in a classroom? So we're also trying to make sure that our instruction is piggybacking and is providing access points into the standards. And the literacy is key to that conversation. So kind of piggybacking back to what Seamus had, had talked about, about the professional development. Anything and everything is what we want to try. So if we, what do I mean when I say that? Wilson, everybody understands when I talk about Wilson, everybody knows that as kind of a curriculum that people go to. And it is a really great program for a lot of kids, but it is not for absolutely everybody. And we have to be nimble enough to say, okay, if this isn't working, what else might work? What else do we need to research? What else do we need to bring in? And so we're constantly, constantly looking at and assessing, what does our instruction look like? Where do we want to go with this? Because at the end of the day, I got to put my speech and language hat back on for just a second, but it's really about the comprehension. It's not just about the decoding and the encoding skills. It's how are we bringing this together for our students? And when kids have success, academic success, then they're confident and they want to come into school. And it just, it brings it all together. So when we've talked about this through PAC, really, what do we want? What do we envision this for our kids? What as a district, what is our, what is our vision? Not just for our students that have specific learning disabilities, but for our students who have, they're eligible under an autistic category or an emotional category, but truly every, what is our access point in? And so we have a lot of conversations. Katie and I have a lot of conversations about, from my end of it, what did the child find obligations look like? What happens when Katie and her crew are doing some of these screenings and this progress monitoring? Are we feeling like the data is getting information? And then when do we step in to say, okay, it's time for us to initiate a school-based referral based on need? And then how do we kind of continue to go forward? So it encompasses the eligibility conversation, the assessment, the conversation and eligibility. And then it talks about the programming. And then it talks about what else do we want to tie into this? I have been incredibly, incredibly proud of the work that the special education teachers and particularly the, the staff tied to the language-based programming. We are, we've revised our progress monitoring. We've been looking at what our data points are for that. They themselves have asked to expand off of some of this Wilson, to go broader than that at the secondary level. We're looking, I, I don't want to say that these are, or imply that these are not happening at each level, but we have different things happening at each level. And so at the middle school level right now, we're doing a lot of assessment about the, that written language strand and what do we want to see with our students? What do we need to be really making sure that we're supporting with that written language output? So I am sure that I didn't answer your question, Michelle. And I'm, I'm probably going off because there's just, like, it just ties into so many different areas.
Well, thank you. That was a lot of great information.
Sorry. I, I can't, I can't help myself. I'm sorry.
And I had a follow-up for Dr. Ellen Emma as well. Because what I hear Ms. Gerard saying and from the conversation you've had, and I feel like I'm channeling my inner Chris Nixon here by saying, historically, you know, we've looked at reading specialists in many different ways over the years. And there was a point in time that we didn't have reading specialists in this district. And we looked at the data and identified a need for them and then put them in place. And we've reevaluated over time. And it strikes me that, that this district is one that focuses on a continuous improvement cycle. That it's not a, it, we, we don't hurry up and respond to a need, but we like to grow our programs and respond to some of, going back to the quote that Ms. Gerard shared with us. Would you say that's a process that this district follows? And how does that make things like early literacy stronger in this district?
Yeah, I would say, I'll, I'll channel my inner Chris Nixon, who taught me that when I came. So I would say that that is, I think we, we really thoughtfully study something, figure out what the needs are and then recognize, again, what the research tells us about change, right? What, how long change takes and how you have to build that, stay committed to that vision and continuously make a shift. That's much like we talk about scaffolding in the classroom, right? We have to build on things one piece at a time, what makes sense and what's the next step? And do it in a way that is, both, we, you know, use these words, a lot meaningful and manageable. So what are our big goals? That, that's what we can focus on with our limited PD, our limited resources, sometimes our limited personnel comparatively. And looking at what can we do in a way that is meaningful and can be done? So sometimes it, it means we have to roll out a longer plan to make that happen. But I, I think the district has been a district, like you said, that does things, you know, long before I was here, thoughtfully and over, over time with the process in place to get there.
And so some of the deadlines on some of this timeline you just showed us doesn't mean we're going to, it, that, I guess my concern is that when I see end dates, that means we stop improving. And so-
That means we'll have 20 more things we want to work on by then.
Right.
As we go through each part of the, just like when we talk about assessments, right? Our hope is with our new assessments that the assessment is part of the learning, right? It's not this separate piece that you do. The same thing is true for every step we have and every plan that we do. It's not just getting that step done. It's a learning opportunity for us to get new information and to continue to make what our next steps out. So sometimes something gets added before we're even done with the rest of the plan because we realize we need that step. Sometimes something gets put at the end of that cycle saying, when we're done with these pieces, it makes sense to move on to that. So very much the process informs us as we go.
Thank you.
So I know Mr. Brady has had his hand up for some time. However, I would like to give people who have not yet had a chance to ask a question, just a quick chance. So Mr. Nixon, could I ask you to ask your question, please?
Sure. I'm going to pile on and channel my inner Chris Nixon with this question. So at one point, this is directed towards Ms. Gerard. As we talked at a, at a couple of recent meetings, so really LBLD was our first major investment in specialized learning centers, and we saw a lot of early success. So much so that we expanded to two and at one point even three sections by grade level. I think that corresponded when we finished the fit-up of the lower level of VO in the fall of 15. My memory was that that was approximately grouped by four, five and then three, four. And then whether that was K2 or 1, 2 or K1, I'm not sure I ever really knew that. But of course, we learned from you in the fall, when we had a meeting at WinCam, that we weren't currently running those three sections. And I think in your remarks a moment ago, you talked about we have a three, four, five grouping. Can you speak to, and I want you to really sort of make this distinction. There's a distinction between, you know, what we're sort of allowed, there's, there's what we're allowed to do or expected to do by DESI, whether it's legislation or regulation. And then there, there are things that we can even do better. So there's a reality, which is we can't group our LBLD students in one bucket, have grades like K through five. You actually cannot do that. Even if we could, that would not be best practice. So can you just speak to what the requirements are with respect to grouping by age level? And if we are running three, four, five today, what is our plan for next year? I think to us in the fall, that you might, we might have another section. I know we have physical space for that at VO. And we always, as Jen is fond of saying, you know, our resources follow the kids. So I'm confident we have flexibility in the budget to meet their needs. Just sort of help us understand a little bit more about how it is structured today and what your thoughts are for the fall as of, you know, April 6th.
Absolutely. And I'm going to, I should have a little caveat and a warning that I may be boring people to tears with my answer to you, Chris. So, but I love this stuff, so watch out. Okay? So in terms of DESI guidance, we could actually run one class, K through five, as long as the, the DESI's guidance goes on instructional grouping for a 48-month window of age. Okay? We did not try to do that. Okay? So part of what the decisions that we have made have been very specific to what we think is better for the students in front of us. And decisions based on what we feel is right for students. So when I first came, Chris, and I joined the Winchester community, we had a two, three and a four, five language-based classes. And we, at that point, decided to go with a grade three, a grade four and a grade five. So I have one language-based program broken down into three grades based on the cohort needs in front of us. Now, there has, every year, when I talk about kind of the dives that we do, we talk about the, we think about the kid needs in front of us, our student needs, and whether or not we need to add a different section that potentially has more, more self-contained opportunities for those students and/or a grade two component. So those are always, always shifting for us. Our current numbers are, they're kind of interesting. We've got 20 students at the elementary, 20 at the middle school and 22 at the high school who fall within the language-based learning disability programming. The current plan right now is that we would continue with that. But I will be honest with you that based on, with this current pandemic, Chris, our numbers are looking a little bit different. So right now, we've been having, I've been involved in a lot of conversations and a lot of, lot of meetings, both with parents and with the principals and the special education supervisors about students that may have been, this programming has been recommended for. And I won't have hard numbers yet until I know if the parents have accepted the programming. But right now, it's looking like we will be running with at least these numbers, if not higher numbers, particularly, I believe, grade three, potentially a grade two, which obviously will be an ask coming back to Judy. Judy, cover your ears for just a second because I haven't had the opportunity to come in because I've been crunching. I, there's so many IEPs and proposals out that I'm, I need harder numbers to come in and to say, hey, I might be needing some of this. And it's looking right now that our middle school numbers may also see an increase.
Great. Thank you very much.
Pam, does that include anybody who's come back to us from out of district placements?
Yes, Michelle, and we haven't actually even had some of that conversation yet. It's, I, I know this sounds so silly to say to you guys. Seamus, with your background in special ed, you may understand what I'm talking about. March and April in special education world, like, it's really busy. And it's like, it is, it, what is it like? You know, what do they say? It's like shooting fish in the, like, it's, it's just, it's crazy. So everything is changing right now. So yeah, I, we have several students that we are proposing a potential return into district. Again, given the pandemic, these are really hard decisions right now. Because do you kind of, you know, parents have a lot of, it's, it's hard. You know, do they stay with some consistency and kind of bring it through next year? Where do they go with it? So I don't have the hard and fast, fast numbers. What I will say to you is that we have been very, very fortunate. And Michelle, I've shared this with you at, at PAC meetings. Our ability to continue to work with the landmark, the landmark outreach programming has been truly tremendous. It's given support and has, it, it has allowed for us ongoing support for the language-based teachers. It's helped us to align each program, each level, elementary to middle and then to the high school. And particularly in the, at VO, at McCall and at the high school, we are bringing in and inviting the general education teachers into the PD and into a lot of the consultations at Landmark Outreach when they come in monthly. So that we are making sure that the approaches and the strategies are then providing opportunity, generalization for the skills. And honestly, you know, good teaching is good teaching. So there's a lot of kids that can benefit from some of these strategies.
Ms. Brady?
Thank you. Just to go back to Jen, on one of the slides, it talked about 42% of our students with disabilities needing or exceeding in ELA. And so obviously that leaves us with more than half of our students with disabilities who are not. And, you know, obviously, I, I know it's taken a lot of hard work to get to this point. And so I'm just curious to hear, you know, this data, for better or for worse, we've had now for a long time because it's 2019 data. So it's nice in that we've had the data for a long time. I'm just curious, what, what sorts of plans are the principals looking at for this next school year? Obviously, this school year has been beyond challenging for everyone. But next school year, we are hoping will be- But next school year, we are hoping will be back to much more of a regular style of school year. And what, what are the principals thinking about when they think about those numbers and knowing that, you know, more than half of the students with disabilities aren't where they need to be? I'd just be curious to hear what, what those discussions are like.
Sure, Jen, can I take this one?
Sure.
Sure. So this is obviously something that is really integral to what we do is looking at data and trying to make decisions to have the greatest impact on the greatest number of students when we're talking about resources, strategies, professional development, additional supports. And I think it's really important to put the data that, that Mr. Brady just shared in context. Overall, in the state of Massachusetts, which has among the highest standards of any state in the country on MCAS testing, the most recent data, 2019, which is the most recent test, because we didn't have one in 2020, showed that overall, 42% of our kids met or exceeded, kids with disabilities, met or exceeded the standards in ELA in grades three through eight. Only 10% failed to meet. And I think that's important. At the state level, 35% failed to meet and only 16% met or exceeded. And it's small consolation to us that our students are scoring 30 or 40 points higher than the state average or higher than every other district who's a comp district. We're not satisfied with that. But expecting all students to achieve at the same time, particularly with students with very significant disabilities, is not realistic. The MCAS tests all third through eighth graders at the same time with the same test, whether they are ready for it or not. And as Jen talked about, the, the function of special education is to provide everyone with equal access to the curriculum. But it doesn't mean they're all going to master those skills at the same time. And this, the state really monitors closely all districts in terms of accountability for students with disabilities, for students who are second language learners, for students who are considered high needs, for students who are socio-economically disadvantaged and so forth. And so for every category of students, the state measures us and holds us accountable. And if there were a category where we were falling short, they would expect us to have a plan and sanction us. And so all of our accountability reports, individual school report cards and district report cards are available on the state website, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. They're also on our website. And I think it's important to look at that data and recognize that it's not so much what percentage of our students with disabilities are meeting or exceeding MCAS guidelines, but how are we monitoring their progress? What steps are we taking to help them achieve at the highest levels that they're capable of achieving? What additional supports are we putting into place? And how are they growing in terms of their skills from the previous MCAS that they took? MCAS is only one measure of success, and I think that there are lots of other ways we can look at where we are either strong or challenged in terms of meeting the needs of students with or without disabilities. And so I think that when you look at the progress, actually, the percentage of students with disabilities in grades three through eight who are meeting or exceeding has, has grown over the three-year period from 2017 to 2019. In large part, I think, because of the co-teaching that we've implemented in the district during that same time period. And they say a rising tide will lift all boats. And I think that having skilled special education staff members, reading specialists, speech and language personnel, all kinds of additional supports as a, an in-classroom service helps all students succeed at high levels, including students with disabilities. And so, so I think we're really proud actually of our data, but we're not satisfied. So I think it's okay to be proud, but not satisfied at the same time. But in terms of the achievement levels of students with disabilities, Pam, I don't know if there's anything I forgot to say that I should have said there?
Only that, that it's all disabilities that are evaluated at the MCAS at the same time. And that there's the, MCAS alt is available for certain, certain learners that the state has, students, they have changed the threshold. So are your ability to recommend that a student participate in an MCAS alt has changed. The, the state is now saying that has to be less than 1%. And I, I understand that. I don't, I philosophically don't love it because I do have some students in front of us that this just isn't how they should be spending their time. But that's, that's part of, of where, you know, of the data that we, that we look at. And so, you know, I just caution, I, Judy, I liked how you just said that, you know? I'm, I'm proud of the scores and, you know, back to my quote, I'm delighted with the work that is being done. That being said, are there ways to improve this based on the students that are in front of us? Yeah, we've always got to be looking at that. So I mean, I think that it is one data point. I'm delighted that, that our students are doing well. And then the question always comes back to, okay, how else can we, you know? Are there other things that we could be doing better? Are there other things that we should be considering? So, I mean, kind of to bring it back to the, the literacy, the piece of it, we're constantly, constantly assessing how we're instructing kids, what it is that, you know? Is, is the instruction, is it, is it meaningful? Is it getting that student from where we, where we want it to go, from where we want them to go? Can we, not that can we guarantee progress, but we have, progress and high progress has to be one of our, our central, our central themes to this, this conversation. So we think about, you know, is it right to have kids pulled out of classes? Is it, you know, are there ways that we can provide support with less disruption into their class that becomes part of their, part of the fluidity of the in-class, of the, of the actual culture of the classroom so that we're not disjointing a day, so that the student views themselves as a member of a classroom? And then, you know, are we using the right curriculum? And, and, and how early and how are we starting it? And what are we doing? And, and equally as important is how are we collecting that data? And then what are we doing with that data? So.
Right. Just a, just a couple of other quick thoughts, I think, that really have an impact when you're looking at overall data. Our district has very strong in-district programs for a variety of learners, which means that we are strongly an inclusive district. For example, all of the students in the LBLD programs, whether elementary, middle or high school, are included in regular classes. And that, I think, is really important to note. And also, we have a very small number of students placed out of district. Those scores in other districts where they send many more students out aren't included in their overall scores. But I would say, we're always open to learning. We always want to improve. And the thing that we are finding frustrating is when we seek other schools who are cited to us as having better results or more innovative programs and we investigate them. In fact, their data doesn't reflect that, that our results are far superior to most of those other districts. And even if we, even as we speak with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and they have access to programs all over the state and say, please send, send us information about some exemplary programs or approaches that might work better, they still haven't identified a single one for us to visit. So it's a little frustrating to have data that indicates your students are achieving at a pretty high level, both students with disabilities and without, and not be able to seek out role models in other districts or programs or approaches that are working better based on the data. And so, but we will not stop in our search and will continue to grow and be open to suggestions. But we are, we are very proud, again, very proud of how hard we are all working to be open and to meet the needs of individual students. But there's no district in the state succeeding at, at higher levels overall for students in grades three through eight. That's a comparable district. And so, learning from that data point, but also all the other data points that we're collecting along the way.
Sorry, I think my question got lost in there. My question was about kind of what, what's being communicated to principals about this data and expectations for next year. It wasn't really a question of whether the data was what it was. Again, I, I think you guys have done great work and there's been great progress made. So it's more about kind of what's the, the vision, given where we are? What's the vision to the principals for next year saying, okay, we know we have 50% of our students with disabilities who aren't where they need to be. What are we doing? What, what, what are we going to do different? What are we gonna, what is our approach? What, what are their kind of marching orders, if you will, from, again, you know, you as superintendent and as assistant superintendent?
Sure. So as you're probably aware, having in, being in public education, when the MCAS data comes, there are data teams at each school that look closely at that to see whether it matches up with what we know about the learners, whether it's just a, a one-off, what are the other sorts of sources of data that we have? Also have intervention teams that look at students' progress throughout the year. And so it's not so much globally, what can we do to have more students with disabilities meet or exceed the MCAS standards? Because that's really a pretty low bar in our estimation. It's more, how is each individual student progressing? And for students with disabilities, there are a lot of eyes on them and a lot of progress monitoring that's different and more specific than we get with the MCAS. And then we have opportunities annually and every three years to reevaluate their services and whether or not those services are working well for them. So our principals all are trained and work collaboratively with the special education supervisors and the teachers to use data all year long. We don't over-rely on MCAS data. And we're always working for continuous improvement. Jen can speak more to the role of the coordinators and how they focus on overall improvement. But, but we're not a district driven by the quest to improve MCAS scores. The improvement in MCAS scores is a byproduct of the good work we're doing in other areas and our overall focus on improving students' ability to read, write, think, listen and speak. And so we're constantly working on improvement. It's not, it's not a top-down approach where we dictate an overall, an overall approach for any principal or any individual school. It's really very much a collaborative effort. I don't know, Jen, if there's anything that I've forgotten there to answer Seamus's question more quickly. This, it's just not a district where we look at MCAS scores and give anyone marching orders. Jen, you want to, you want to jump in there? Did I miss anything? In terms of your work with Katie and the literacy coaches or Katie, maybe you could speak to when, when and how reading specialists and teachers might use MCAS scores and/or other literacy assessments? And how does that drive change?
Sure, so I'll be happy to talk kind of from the bigger picture and then Katie can zoom in just briefly. So, you know, I think we all know, right, reading is so complex. And, you know, as Judy's fond of saying, the reading wars have been going on for 35 years, like back and forth, do more of this, less of this, right? We see the pendulum swing back and forth in education. And the truth is, right, if there was, like I always say this, if there was one silver bullet, right? Our PD would be all around that all the time. But it is complex and it is developmental. And, you know, we hear the concerns, right? If you have a child that's struggling, it's, you know, I think most of us have been there. And we feel that and hear that. And if, if there was a quick, we could just do this and that would fix it or that would solve it or that would, I, I think to Judy's point, it is a lot of individual and differentiation and seeing where we are. And, right, it takes time to see the result. It's like I always say, it's like farming, right? We plant something and then it takes time to assess like what's working, what makes sense. I mean, you're absolutely right about our MCAS grades three through eight. But, and this could be an anomaly, so this is the other thing we always think about with data. But when we look at our third grade scores, which is our quote unquote best indicator of our elementary early literacy, right, our third grade scores, you know, we jumped up to 59% of our students with disabilities needing or exceeding. And so we also want to be very mindful of how we proceed, that we don't undo some things that do appear to be working. Because the state, you know, average at that is 22. And again, certainly not that it's, we're always comparing against ourselves, right? And not each other, but we've grown a lot and our scores have shown that. So we want to make sure that what seems to be working is good practices. We continue to do those. But it's, it's just, I mean, I'm just being honest. It's a little like Monday morning quarterbacking, right? You, we're pushing on all these levers and for different kids, different things are working. And there's not this straight cause-effect that we can say, we did this, so this happened. Or we didn't do this, that this happened. And the parents are right, they do, you know, a lot of things outside of school to support that. The same is true, and I like districts, that the data compares us to. The same is true for anyone in the socioeconomic status that we're in. Families do a lot of extra supports, as I think any of us have done with our own children struggling in whatever area. So we want to keep improving what we can do next, but there's not always a clear answer. And I think that's a little bit of what it's feeling like is people are waiting for, if you do this, this will happen. That's just not the, that's not the reality or schools would have done it long before any of us. These, you know, debates have been going on for years. So I think that's the big picture is we just kind of keep drilling down to individual students that are struggling and trying different approaches and trying different things around it. But I'm sure Katie can speak a little bit more to that piece.
Yeah, what I would love to add too is that we're constantly looking at multiple data points. So we are trying not to hang our hat on any one piece of data about students as readers and writers and literacy learners, but looking at multiple pieces of that. And as always, we're reflective. So when we do see that there is, you know, an area that we might want to look closer at, we, we take a look at various assessments that might get us that information that we're looking for. And then we put that assessment into place. So for example, this year, we added in a phonological awareness screening test at our K one and twos because we knew that that was something we wanted to know more about for our youngest learners. And then as far as our interventions is, we plan those, we, you know, those are built around what the assessments show. So we don't have, like Jen and Judy were both saying, we don't have a blanket now this, you know, if this, then that for everybody. It's if this student needs this, then we'll let's work towards that. So we have lots of pieces that we look at for our kiddos.
I'm just going to interject with one question before I come to you, Ms. Bergstrom. I, on the next steps, I know that you have talked about tiered focus monitoring that is coming up in 2021, 22. And I'm just wondering, could you talk about what kinds of criteria are assessed, are self-assessed in the tiered focus monitoring? So that what can we expect?
I'd be happy to take that, Jen.
Sure, but let me just clarify first. There is no, it's always, they're all specialized, so there's no focused monitoring on our curriculum in general. Like Judy said, if the DESI had concerns about our overall practices with curriculum, there would be a different level of intervention they would do. So just to make clear for the tiered progress monitoring, it's very specialized, special ed, EL and civil rights. Sorry, go ahead, Pam.
And embedded with that, Karen, there's different, so they refer to them by number. So SE 26, SE 49. They want to make sure that your processes are following within compliance. So you have to go in and do a pretty deep dive into is your, kind of your functioning procedural manual? And ours is structured online through a series of Google files. Is everything current? Is it reflective of the practice? And then we have indicator data that we have to, we have to support. And so we look at our three-year-old population and transitions. We look at, are we meeting the timelines, the 30 and 45-day timelines? Are we looking at, so we've got three indicators right now, indicator 13, 14 and 11. Preschool timeline compliance and then students who have graduated and then what their post-secondary plans are. That is one of the more, more challenging ones to follow up on because high school, last year's high school seniors, high school, last year's high school seniors, when they graduate, they don't really answer a lot of the survey questions. So that data is very, very, very difficult to track down. But the state, the state asks us to look at this. And so we're constantly looking. Our accountability is constantly being evaluated and I, I think that I'm assuming that school committee is aware of this, but the district was in fact found significantly disproportionate for having too many specific learning, finding of too many white students identified as with specific learning disability. And so we're also doing a very, very deep dive on practice and you know, what a root cause analysis is of that.
Thank you very much. Ms. Bergstrom?
I just had a really quick question and Katie sort of touched on it. Katie, you've intimate, you've implemented the phonological screener. We're now going to have kindergarten screeners. The, the, the dibbles that you were talking about, can you just talk about how that's going to be used? Because I believe those are all general ed tools, not special education tools. So these aren't meant to identify students with dyslexia. We're not, these aren't diagnosis tools. Is that correct?
Right. It's an, and so the screeners are indicators for risk of a reading disability. So we'll be using the screeners to identify what our students might need and how we can remediate some of the skills that they have areas for growth in and how we're going to support them. Then if possible, put small groups together. Sometimes it's a co-teaching opportunity where a reading specialist is in that classroom with the first grade or kindergarten teacher, sometimes second grade. Where they're partnering to look at some of that whole class data and then building small groups off of that. And sometimes one-on-one conferencing pieces that they're going to do with kiddos. So the screeners will be used as we use our other assessments to monitor, sorry, to not monitor. That would be a progress monitoring assessment. But to look at what we have going on and what kids might need. And then for those kiddos that they have indicators of at risk, we provide the intervention. We'll have progress monitoring specific to the intervention that we are looking at. And we, we do have meetings at the K-one and I, I it, the two happens more teacher, reading specialist based. But at K and one, we have team meetings where we're partnering our reading specialists with our classroom teachers to look at the information that we've gathered. Both the literacy assessments that the classroom teacher has gathered, gathered as well as the assessments that the reading specialist has gathered to make a plan for instruction.
So with more assessments and more ability to identify key indicators, will we also have the ability then to utilize the reading specialist in a different way to get students access to specialists that have been trained?
That's a great question because one of, so on, as you saw in our literacy update chart, we are looking at getting more professional development that is in that area for our reading specialists. So that will be something we'll look at as we're developing our literacy plan going forward too, how that get, gets put into place.
Thanks.
If I could just add, I think that's a nice natural next step for the shift we've kind of been making in literacy over the past few years is heavier on the earth on that, those early reading interventions at the early levels. Even though we know we have downshifted support in fourth and fifth grade in particular, trying to get to students earlier and provide more support there, we're hoping is an earlier intervention. That means less students will need it later.
Do we have any other questions or comments from the committee? Mr. Nixon?
I, I guess I have a clothing, a closing thought to address maybe one of the elephants in the room is that this issue certainly became a front-stage matter during the campaign. It's something our two newest members have engaged in and engaged on, as have the other three of us through a number of parents. Particularly at office hours, which I thought were very interesting. I am somewhat conflicted when a group of parents spends the time and energy to put together a twenty-something minute video and post it to YouTube and it goes up anonymously. There was a father in that video who made a couple of statements that I wrote down because they really resonated with me. They struck me and I'd love to have a conversation with him and I have no idea who it is. Some of the clips in this video come from public comment, so I'm familiar with those. Not all of them do. Some of them are new thoughts and ideas. And the school committee did get an email, I think it was this morning from a group. You know, it has a name, but it's still somewhat anonymous. And if it represents seventy families, I would say, or let's say seventy students, you know, those seventy students are all unique individuals with unique needs and unique requirements and unique challenges. One of the things that I hope we can continue to do with this new school committee, and we'll need to, and I'm sure we may not discuss it today, but perhaps in the next couple of weeks is, to what extent can we continue to facilitate office hours? I, you know, because of open meeting law, we can't have more than two school committee members engaged in office hours because then it becomes a public meeting. But I have, but, but other members can still have the opportunity to sort of be in as not a panelist, but a participant, to use the Zoom lingo. And so I really enjoyed then listening in to some of these meetings. There was one that was hosted by our former chair and by Ms. Bergstrom, in, in which it became clear that for some families, a primary concern is about early screening and identification. For some other families, the issue may seem to be more about curriculum. In another instance, the concerns seem to be more about plan delivery, you know, about a specific IEP. And these are all important issues and all important questions. And so I, I, I don't in any way mean to be, because I'm not dismissive of where these concerns are coming from. We all want what's best for our kids. But I do feel like how the message is sort of continuing to be communicated makes it somewhat difficult for me. And the email that came this morning had many, many detailed questions that are, are clearly at an operational level, which are not. That's not the level at which the school committee operates and are some questions that are sort of best delivered to administration. So I realized that, I, I, I hope some of what parents heard today was helpful and encouraging. I'm sure it wasn't fully satisfying for everyone. I hope that we can continue to find a way to engage with these parents. And, you know, to the extent parents have specific issues or questions as they pertain to their child, know that they can reach out to the administration, they can reach out to Pam if that's appropriate or Judy if that's appropriate. And then my last request, and we, we've touched on this briefly at one of our earlier meetings. I, I would really encourage this group to continue to engage with the PAC. The PAC is an important body. It has a role defined by regulations. And there was a time, frankly, in the run-up to the establishment of our strong L B L D program at V O, where there was basically like a subcommittee of the PAC that was formed around L B L D issues. That in fact is permitted by the, the commissioner, two or three commissioners ago wrote a memo that said you can do that. That group did some fantastic work in Winchester. They brought in a number of speakers. They packed the house at McCall. They engaged in a really kind of productive way with the school committee and the administration back at that time. So there is a, I can only describe it, there's kind of a clunkiness right now in the way in which we, we're, we're, we're dealing with this issue. But that doesn't mean that these aren't really good and important questions. And I want to say thank you to Jen and Katie Malone for the work that you've been doing here in the present, the information that you're bringing forward to us. I continue to look forward to those periodic updates. And to the chair, I would just say, let's, let's just find a way to, you know, if we can keep the office hours going, remind parents that we're perfectly happy to carry on these kinds of conversations and continue to educate ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nixon. And yes, I am sure office hours will be a subject of our, of one of our upcoming discussions. Any further comment? And seeing none, thank you very much to all for your engagement in this very important topic. And to our presenters, Dr. Ellen Emma and Ms. Malone and Dr. Evans. So we shall now move on to the next order of business, which is a report on the COVID nineteen return to school update with subsections on at elementary level and middle school and high school.
Thank you. I'd like to provide an update to the school committee on the steps we're taking to move toward a fuller return to school for those students and families who feel that that's the best option for them. And also talk briefly about the status of the COVID nineteen pilot pool testing initiative and where we are with assessing that. So why don't I start with the pool testing? As you heard from Evan at the outset, the state, partially state-funded initiative to encourage pool testing of students and faculty members at Winchester High School is working very smoothly. I give a lot of credit to public health, to parent volunteers, to the high school administration and our nurse leader in particular. Despite that, participation rates have been extraordinarily low. We have fortunately not identified any positive pools, so that's a plus. But the vast majority of both staff members and students who are present every day choose, have chosen not to participate. More families have pre-registered, but then the students are not participating. And so that's been concerning to us. So this weekend, we sent out a survey to all families and staff members and said, if we're able to extend the pool testing initiative beyond the planned initial period, which was April, into other schools, would you and your family participate? And again, somewhat disappointingly, the response rate on both the staff member and family surveys was pretty low. We had about twenty or thirty percent of the folks who could have filled out the surveys, filled them out. And of those, somewhere between fifty and seventy percent said they would participate. So there does not seem to be a strong level of interest in participating. And there's a lot of work and expense, even if the state continues to fund part of it, to the ramp up at each individual school. That being said, I think both public health and the school administrators see a lot of benefits to pool testing, particularly for our students as we come back at three feet. And so as Evan said, you know, we've really been working hard to encourage it at the high school. And even to, you know, bribery, donuts and gift cards and other incentives. Other districts have had higher success rates, but a lot of those districts are in communities where there's a higher positivity rate in the overall community. And I think that maybe has driven some of it. A lot of our like districts have been unsuccessful with their pool testing initiatives in terms of generating enough people to give you the information that you need to make folks feel confident that there's not undiagnosed positive cases in the district. So we're still struggling with it a bit. I'll provide another update. I'm meeting with our implementation team on Thursday to review the surveys to review our contract with our provider, our pool testing provider. We do need to negotiate rates to expand and then apply to the state for some partial funding, if that is the way we're going to go. But we just want to make sure before we jump into this with both feet, that it's going to get paid dividends. So I'll stop there and take any questions that folks might have or suggestions around the issue of pool testing.
Are there any questions from the committee? I would just make a comment, Mr. Brady?
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited to hear that, you know, you guys are doing some incentives and, you know, I'm, I'm just wondering if there has been anything around that in terms of, you know, different classes or different elementary schools, just trying to get a little bit of a level of excitement. I, I can just speak to my own experience at my elementary school, the, the kids, I can't explain why, but they are somewhat excited about it. It's a thing on Mondays, you go down, you swab your nose. I usually show up and swab my nose with them. They get a kick out of that. I'm just wondering if that's anything we've been able to do that's much more elementary focused. I know it's always going to be harder at the high school level.
Yes. So we started at the high school level because that was the place where we felt there was the most risk because of the number of students and the passing to a, a large number of classes. And then we would get good data because fourteen hundred potential student clients and several hundred adults. We haven't, we haven't jumped into this at all at the elementary level. And so we first wanted to gauge whether or not parents would give permission. And I was surprised that only about seventy percent of the parents who responded, and there were only seven hundred families who responded, said that they would participate. And so, you know, we've really got to decide if there's not a strong community push for this, whether it's worth. It's a lot of training, as you know, a lot of administrative upfront time to do the registration. It looks easy, it's a little swab, but even at the high school level, the lead nurses spending eight or ten hours a week to support pool, the pool testing. And it's eight or ten hours that she didn't have. And so at the elementary level, it's the same thing, that the nurses just don't have the time. Particularly now that we're back full and in person. So we have a small window of opportunity, I, I think, before to get to take advantage of the state's support, financial support. So we need to make a decision fairly quickly. So, so I'll come back to you. But I, I agree, it's kind of baffling to me to see, you know, and I think part of it is that so many members of our community have either had COVID or are already vaccinated and there's sort of a level of apathy about adults at this point. And less concern about the students. So we shall see. But that's where we are in the pilot testing. Karen, anything before I move on to elementary?
Oh, yes. I was just going to make a comment that I know that we've rolled this out in the high school. And we've seen how it's been going there. And I would just say that among elementary school students and perhaps middle school families, there has been interest expressed on the survey when we were talking about return, returning to school. So there were a number of questions that came up about doing pooled testing. And just in talking with some families this morning to and from school, I've, the, one of the sentiments I've heard from elementary school is, oh, well, I'm interested in pooled testing. I don't really know what it's about. So I think that for our elementary school students and perhaps families and our middle school families who haven't, who haven't participated in the pooled testing, there's a little bit of uncertainty about, oh, well, what exactly happens with this? How does it work? And what impact does it have on us? So, or whatever, for what it's worth, then perhaps it might be useful just to send a little more information and communicate on that a little bit more.
Sure. So the, the survey has a link that's got a one-page handout on pooled testing. Maybe I'll send that out as a separate document the next time I update, send my health update around positive cases and and invite people to submit questions or again, learn more about it. So moving into the K-five and I'm cognizant of the time, it's eleven thirty-eight. I'm going to hit the highlights of the return at each of the three levels and then take questions. I'm assuming that most parents who are involved already have the information. So I'm sharing this for sort of general information purposes. And for those of you who may not have children in the schools. So in your packet on page twenty-one, I have updated the lengthy document that the K-five working group put together. And the changes are in italics. So you can see there were some updated recommendations related to facilities and operations and some changes in the overview, but the rest of it remained pretty similar to what you had seen in the past. And so in terms of facilities and operations, I'm just going to hit some of the highlights. The, the full return to school happened yesterday for those students who chose to return. Of our full remote students, three hundred and thirty-six K-five students opted to stay full remote and a hundred and ten opted to return. Many of those students were able to return to their home schools. Some others were not, as you heard in public comment. We knew that this would be a likely outcome because some of our classrooms cannot accommodate more than twenty-one or twenty-two students at three-foot distance. Especially if there are a couple of adults working in there, either classroom assistants or other teachers or co-teachers. And so particularly at fifth grade, this was an issue. We wanted to be sure that teachers and students could stay together if possible. We were really reluctant unless it's a choice by family to come back from full remote to make changes to existing classroom structures, especially for the hybrid students. who had been with us all year in a, in a hybrid formation. So we did have a few fifth grade students who needed to return to a district-wide in-person class. We're housing that at Morocco because that's where the greatest number of students came from, from that group. And we hired an extra teacher to, as a leave of absence replacement essentially, to finish the year with that class. The elementary principals did a nice job welcoming back the full remote students. They did an orientation last Wednesday and the teachers, I think, worked hard to integrate those students into the classroom. And in fact, I heard last night at the PISC meeting, a touching story where a student made a new friend and the, and her, and her mother said, oh, was it a full remote student who joined your class? And she said, no, it was someone from the other cohort. And she'd only seen this other student via Zoom on Wednesdays or when they were doing full class morning meeting. And there's, there's a difference when you meet in person. And so our students are making new friends. I want to give a special shout out to the social emotional learning coaches, our counselors at the elementary level, who've been working really hard to do social stories and to go into classrooms to help our students adjust. Everybody who's back in person is adjusting, whether it's a hybrid student or a full remote student, adjusting to having perhaps the loss of some classmates to back to in-person. And the principals and the counselors just did a very thoughtful job in a very short period of time, trying to be sure that everybody feels, feels comfortable and confident and knows where the resources are to support that return. Obviously, there are a lot of logistics. Ellen Widmore, Director of Operations and Finance, had to really scramble and just like she did with PPE, I don't know how she did it. She was able to order. How many desks did we have to acquire for this, Ellen?
A lot.
Hundreds? Yes, hundreds of additional desks and have them installed and ready before the students came back. The reason we needed to shift to desks is that's not how we teach. We teach with tables. We teach with those little trapezoid tables or two or three, four-person tables so that students can work with each other. But in order to keep students separate, we needed to put in a lot of desks. We also had to put some in lunchrooms, create larger spaces, library, you know, supplemental spaces. And so Ellen waved her magic wand and was able to get some desks and have them installed and, or, and/or brought out of storage. And so we were ready there. We've also signed a contract to have tents installed at each school that'll, that'll be installed the week of the 15th. And so the physical plans, I think, are working well. The, we're looking forward to welcoming some senior exploration students to our elementary schools to help out with that and also some community volunteers. I know Spollinaze is often a frequent traffic monitor or arrival monitor at the O school. All of those extra hands on deck are really helpful and will be an important part of this process. As you heard from public comment, not every student was able to return to home schools. Not every student who has returned to the district has been able to return to a homeschool or students who've moved here have been able to go to a homeschool. That adds a layer of complication. Not every student has the services available to move from full remote to in-person or vice versa. A few, a very few students moved to full remote as part of this process as well. So there's been a lot of planning that has gone into this. All of our specialist teachers have changed their mode from full remote to in-person and that's gone well. So those specialists, including PE folks working outside, trying to make use of the space. But really, I just want to emphasize that a lot of effort and planning has gone into making this successful. And, you know, the, the caveat is that if there is a positive case in a classroom, while, if the student is infectious while at school, it's much more likely that a whole classroom will be quarantined. And we did see this happen yesterday at one of our elementary schools. It's especially going to happen at the lower elementary where students are more likely to mix with each other. And you can't be sure that they are strictly following that three-foot guideline or the six-foot guideline. And so that's, you know, I'm hoping that that is not going to be prevalent, but I am fearful that as we get positive cases, that everyone's going to have to be very patient when students are quarantined. We have the capacity to provide supports for those students, either through other personnel, the interns or volunteers and teachers. If teachers have large numbers of students quarantined, they can teach them remotely and move into that. And so especially at the elementary level, what we're trying to do is all, just remember to take a breath and be flexible and be joyful for the full remote students who have made adjustments or the in-person students who've made adjustments and their teachers. I did get some feedback on the full remote from some of our parents at PISC last night saying students are fatigued because they're spending more time on Zooms. And that is a concern for us, trying to balance that. And we'll be working to support the full remote teachers with more strategies so that they can break up the day a bit so that students aren't staring at a screen all day, especially as the weather is getting nicer. There will be an attempt to reach out, especially to full remote students to include them in whatever the end of the year celebrations are, particularly for fifth graders. We want people to feel connected to their home schools. But overall, the K5 return has gone swimmingly and I'm extremely proud of everyone's hard work, their flexibility and their can-do attitudes about this. So I'll stop there and take any questions on K5 before I move on to middle and high school.
Ms. Bergstrom?
I just have a quick question, Dr. Evans. When we were six feet apart, our symptom checker, and this may be a question for you to take back to Jen Murphy. But when we were six feet apart, our symptom checker was about individual students, but not about siblings or family members. Now that we're three feet apart and there's a greater risk of quarantine, would it be acceptable or advisable to update our symptom checker to perhaps say, if you have a sibling with COVID symptoms, please keep all of the children in the family home until we're sure of the COVID testing?
Well, that's a, that's a great question. And I will put it back to the nurse leader and Jen Murphy. We've updated our symptom checker several times. I sent out an updated one yesterday. We follow public health and CDC and state guidelines and try not to overstep, but let me write down that question and I will ask it. I don't know if we can compel, but it certainly, it would be a good idea. The, the majority of the students in the past who've been identified were already quarantined because they were close contacts of siblings. So it really would be the first student who's ill, is that an illness that's associated with COVID? So let me, let me follow, follow up on that. That's a good question. Other questions? I see Mr. Brady has his hand up.
Judy, I just wanted to thank you guys because having been involved in it myself, it is a tremendous amount of work. It's almost like starting the school year over. I'm not sure everyone realizes that normally when you're starting the school year, you have the summer time to get ready. And so these educators have been asked at every level to restart the school year yet again. And it is just a tremendous lift. And I, I just want to thank you all and recognize you all because it's just an enormous thing that you've done. And again, we, we heard last night at PISC that things have gone great. And, you know, I, I think that it needs to be recognized again and again because this is, again, it's something that no, no school people have ever had to do before, at least none in the last hundred years. So, you know, I, I think it just needs to be said that it's a tremendous effort. And, you know, I, I just, I want to thank you all again.
Sure. I'd be sure to pass that on. Thank you for that. Any other, Chris Nixon, do you have a question on K5?
I do. It's a weedy question. I'm circling back on crossing guards. We talked about this a couple of weeks ago. Tomorrow's Wednesday, first Wednesday, and a long time. We have kids coming to school. Are we all set with crossing guards tomorrow? And I would just say in general, I've noticed more uniformed officers are handling crossing guard duty this year, at least in my neck of the woods. And I'm happy to see that. I, I wonder if that just maybe speaks to an unavailability of civilians who usually do it. But are we covered? We're all set for tomorrow?
So that, you know, that's a great question. I will circle back. We have been working closely with public safety on the return. The elementary day hasn't changed, so four days a week, they're used to having kids walking, but lots more kids walking now. And, and so Ellen and I will circle back with the safety officer to make sure that we're fully covered. What I would say, just to remind everybody, the crossing guards are employed by the police department and they don't work for the school department. The police department tries valiantly to get crossing guards and every year they fall short. Every time you see a uniformed officer, it means they don't have staff. And so we're fortunate because we have a large number of crossing guards. Our police department is very generous. And, and I think some of the crosswalk changes that were funded by the town, particularly around Lincoln and McCall, have really made a difference in terms of improving safety for drop-off and for walkers. We have a larger number than typical walkers because we have fewer students who can fit on buses. And as the weather gets nicer, there'll be more. And so we'll continue to work with, with public safety on that. But I'll double check about tomorrow. There are no, there are changes in times for the middle and high school coming up the week of April 26th, but no sort of length of day changes at the elementary level, with the exception of adding the Wednesday day back. Anything else, Mr. Nixon?
Yes, I wanted to offer to you and the rest of the committee that the new sidewalk on Bates Road at Morocco has been absolutely incredible. So I made a point, I wanted to be there yesterday to see how this was going to work. And I think because yesterday was such a big deal day with everybody being to back to school and the weather was okay, but there was just a tremendous volume of cars. They backed all the way up to Washington Street, but we had students who were running along that extended sidewalk up Bates Road looking for a car. They got in and it was just incredible how quickly everybody was able to move out of there. And then with our walkers coming from sort of the Stoneham Woburn side, now having a direct access to school, it has really freed up how that intersection flows. So just from a convenience and safety point of view, I'm really happy we got that done. It has absolutely just changed that funnel in a significant way.
Great. I'll make sure DPW especially hears that because I know Jay Gill worked hard to advocate for and get a sidewalk installed done in a timely fashion at Morocco. Any other questions on K5? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to middle school. Middle and high school return to school creates a whole host of challenges because the only way we were able to fund a full remote program and an in-person program and make that work was to have a lot of shared staff who were working both remotely and in-person and some dedicated courses on at-home days that were not, not the way we would typically organize a school day. We also needed to have a straight academic schedule with no breaks. So teachers and students started at 9:30 to provide for contractual preparation time before school. So the only way to bring everybody back who wants to come back in full is to modify the schedule pretty significantly at both middle school and high school. So the objective is to get students back in the routine who wish to come back who aren't full remote five days a week and the isolation for those students and, and start to build routines and work out the kinks before the fall. The middle school is following the same rules and restrictions as elementary around six feet apart at lunch, three feet during classes and making sure that we provide for appropriate services for those students who have either EL or special education services or counseling services. The school is returning to an 8:30, 3:07 schedule, seven-period day, both for in-person and remote students. And the lunches will be held in the cafeteria, the gymnasium, the auditorium, perhaps outside. PE classes will all be outside at the middle school and the lockers will not be used. And so the main challenge is obviously at the middle school facing us would be, it's just not a great space for 1,100 students, even if, even after we've added additional classrooms with the very effective and generous, you know, additional classrooms we added on, on the, in recent years through the Phase One and Phase Two additions to McCall. It's not enough to keep students apart at three feet easily. And we don't have enough world language and exploratory staff members to teach both in-person and remote under this scenario. So in some cases, we're going to have to do some streaming and move some classrooms to other locations. So the live streaming has not been something I've been a big fan of because I think it really limits the teacher's ability to support both in-class and at-home students at the same time as effectively as having just one group. However, it's a solution that we're going to implement and that we sent some teachers for training, visited other districts to take a look at how they've been doing it. So a small subset of classes is going to learn from a satellite location if we cannot accommodate them in a regular class. And there will be some required changes to teachers or teams. We're trying to limit those as much as possible. If, for students who did not request a model change, we're trying to keep them on the same team. All world language and exploratory classes will be streamed because there will be students at home and in school. Otherwise, we couldn't offer them to the students at home. We won't offer PE to students at home. We'll offer them alternate activities because the PE teachers will be outside and moving around and it's too difficult to livestream outdoors. We have worked closely to look at special education services to make sure we can provide the mandated free and appropriate education. And before equal breaks, students will receive notice if they, of their schedules. What we're going to do is have an A day and a B day that week of April 26th and then everybody comes in together on the Wednesday. So I, I do want to commend the middle school. They're trying to troubleshoot. They're trying to think outside the box. The school's too small to welcome everyone back with all the restrictions easily. Some students are staying full remote. About 60 students have indicated they want to come back in person from full remote. And so I think Mr. Lynn has done a good job communicating. He's done a webinar for parents. He's had office hours for staff members. They made very good use of the Friday Professional Development Day for planning. They've moved furniture. They've done all the same things the elementary level has done. But they've just got a much more complicated schedule with a lot of moving parts. So I have been much closer to the K5 effort. And Mr. Lynn and Mr. Mahoney have been managing the six through 12 effort. They're not here today, but I'd be happy to take questions. And if I don't know the answers, I will investigate and get back to you. So any questions on middle school? And Jen, if you know anything that I don't know, or Ellen, or Pam, or Jason, jump in. But questions? I think Chris had his hand up first.
Just a procedural matter. I think we officially only voted to return K5. And so that may be an issue for us to discuss soon, if we want to take a formal issue. In other words, to reverse action on our return to school plan, we voted in the summer, even though, even though we knew this was coming. I believe we only voted for elementary.
This is true, although the guidance from the DESE says you do not need to vote because they are mandating it. I guess the thing that you did was to authorize me to work with the principals around the details of the implementation. And so I think that would be the vote. But this is one of those things where they're not giving us a choice about coming back. And part of me is really excited about them coming back. It's a huge lift. It's a, it's, you know, it's fraught with all kinds of challenges. But, you know, driving, driving by Ambrose yesterday and seeing the kids outside in three different big groups by class and getting a peek into some of the classrooms and the excitement, you know, I think there's, there's a lot of excitement about getting back to normal. So I defer to you, you know, the school committee can vote to support or not this plan or authorize me or not. I'm, I'm fine either way.
So I, I raise it. I, I doubt very much we would not support it. I, I just raise it because I know we took that action at the elementary level and if it wouldn't be helpful and appropriate for do, for us to do something similar for McCall.
Sure. I defer to the chair on that one, whatever, whatever you'd like to do. Any other questions on middle school before I jump into high school? Okay, jumping into high school. As Mr. Mahoney has written in his message to families with great excitement and a healthy amount of trepidation, we're opening the doors for a five-full-day schedule starting the week of the 26th. All of the same provisions that the middle school is implementing around, going back to our typical length of school day and the use of alternate spaces, all of those things are applying, streaming. Our goal again at, at high school especially is not to have students Our goal again at, at high school especially is not to have students lose any of the classes that they currently have, to keep the same teachers as much as possible, um, and to provide for flexibility during the day. Fourteen hundred students at the high school is a lot of students. It's a lot of bodies. It's a lot of moving parts. There are some times of the day where we simply cannot accommodate those students at six feet of distance. At lunch especially is a real pinch point and also it's for study halls. So there will be a kind of a modified open campus for all students at lunch and for many students, other periods of the day. This is going to require a lot of support from families and the wider community to try to help students make good choices because we are loosening the strings a little bit of supervision. And there'll be more students out and about during the school day than there typically are. I think our kids can handle it. I think they'll handle it responsibly. But I would put in a plea for every adult who's associated with a student of high school age or not to just keep a, a kind and caring eye out to be sure that students are making good choices. It's the only way we can make this work. And so we're going to be phasing it in, um, starting Monday, the twenty sixth of April and Tuesday, the twenty seventh. What we're going to do is have all ninth and tenth grade students come back to the high school. And then eleventh and twelfth grade would be remote, um, just to get the younger students used to the routines. And then on Wednesday, everybody comes back together. So a little bit of a phase in, um, at the high school level. But everybody, starting on the twenty sixth at the high school, follows the new schedule. The, uh, high school has a lot of large classes that cannot fit into a typical classroom. So the high school is creating a lo, a lot of kind of atypical learning spaces, like dividing the gym up into several classrooms or the library or other spaces and moving classrooms around so that, we want to thank teachers and students in advance because we will be moving bodies around in ways that aren't typical. Typically, teachers have their own classrooms and students go to that classroom. But often our classes are at thirty or above and it's just too large to fit into a regular classroom safely at three feet. And so they really are scrambling a bit. But, uh, we are really looking forward to seeing more students back at the high school together. If they choose, if they and their families choose to do that. Clubs and activities, uh, will start to begin to meet on campus. We prefer that they meet in reduced numbers outside or remotely. And so we may see more students on campus. There's still very much modified sports and, and we can bring Mr. Rhea in to talk about that, the remaining sports season. Student parking is going to become scarce. Um, we want to remind students to only park in the designated student parking lot or along Skilling's Road where the signage permits. We're trying to open our fitness center again, but we have to have a plan. Uh, working with public health again on every decision we make. We're going to continue to do pool testing. Uh, we don't know whether that will be once or twice a week at the high school. And the senior exploration, I think, is a, is an exciting opportunity for students to, um, kind of round out the senior year, um, doing things that are of interest to them or that where they can give back to the wider community. So happy to answer any questions on the senior return plan. We will see, as you know, as, as Mr. Nixon pointed out, see a lot more traffic, um, and a lot more, um, movement around, the community as more students, um, come back. There are many fewer remote, fully remote students at middle and high school than there are at the elementary level. So most of the students will be back. Questions on high school? And then I want to talk about, um, busing for, um, uh, Mystic School before I wrap up this kind of report.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Uh, just a quick question, Dr. Evans. Full remote students on those Monday, Tuesday at middle and high school, will they also be split into two groups or will they just have school as usual on that Monday and Tuesday?
So because they will be attending classes with some in-person students, everybody switches to the new schedule. So the full remote high school students will follow their new schedule. So they'll stay full remote, but it'll be on a new schedule. The, they won't, there will no longer be any downtime for the full remote. They'll have, if, unless they have a study hall or a break, a regular break, they'll have their full classes every day for the rotation that the high school uses. So it really is a pretty dramatic change for all middle and high school students, whether full or motor in person.
And just my excitement for Mr. Mahoney because I know he's been working on senior exploration for years and that he piloted it last spring. So I'm glad to see it come to greater fruition this year and hopefully continues to build.
Sure. Yeah, I'm excited about that too. Any other questions or feedback on the high school?
I just had a question, which is a bit of a carryover from middle school. On PE, I know you had said that there would not be live streaming of the classes. Are we going to be substituting anything for that time period with, when students are supposed to be in PE but cannot be?
Sure. I, uh, I think they'll give them alternate activities. Jason, I don't know if you have any information about elementary PE from working with those folks.
I'm sorry, middle school and high school?
Oh, just middle and high school. I don't know that PE will, um, the, the designation of students at home is, that's a middle school issue. I don't know how the high school is handling the PE question when students return. So Jason, any other additional information or can you find out and get back to Karen on that?
Yes, I will, I'll be happy to get back to you on that.
Great, thank you. Okay, it doesn't look like there are other questions. Um, very quickly, transportation. I don't know if, um, uh, Karen, if you can give Ellen sharing ability. I just was wondering if she could share a spreadsheet that we developed, that she developed this morning. So, um, one of the issues that the school committee has tackled in the past has been transportation. And one of the COVID nineteen restrictions that we still have, um, made in consultation with public health is, uh, that we are still limiting, um, students to one per seat on school buses, except if it's a sibling group. Which, uh, you know, the consequence of that is that we can transport fewer students. There are fewer students who've asked for bus passes, but you have all been contacted recently because there was some concern about the students who, um, attend after-school programs at Mystic School, at Kids Corner and at the REC department. And we had a little bit of miscommunication about that because we weren't aware that Kids Corner was going to be, um, implementing an after-school program and how many students would need transportation. So we asked, um, you, if you remember, to allow REC students to come back in the, when we returned bus to service K to eight, if there were empty seats. And we weren't adding those extra buses in the afternoon to go to Mystic, um, that we typically would from each of the elementary schools. So in consultation with REC and in consultation with, um, Kids Corner, they have identified by elementary school how many seats that, um, they think that they will need. And you can see that in the second to last column. And then in the last column, you can see how many open seats we've currently identified based on one per student per seat. Siblings obviously could see two per seat. That would increase available seats. So, uh, you can see that at most schools, we have some open seats. There are two schools where in order to transport more students to, um, Mystic, we would need to add busing service potentially. One for sure would be Lynch and the other would be VO. And so this is not on the agenda today, but I think it's a, um, time sensitive issue for some parents and the wider community. Um, and we always like to accommodate our parents if possible. The cost, the remain, the cost for the remainder of the year to add those buses, uh, is about three hundred and sixty-nine dollars per bus. We've already, if you might remember, we had a settlement where we were paying seventy percent already. So the, the full cost for the remainder of the year after we've already paid the seventy percent, uh, per bus is slightly less than forty-nine hundred, forty-eight, seventy, eighty, about forty-seven hundred, uh, forty-eight hundred and seventy dollars per bus. What I would ask is for the school committee to take, um, out of usual practice and have a vote to support, um, the school department adding, uh, up to two additional buses at a total cost of forty-eight, seventy, eighty per bus in order to support our families who go to Mystic School in the afternoons for the remainder of this school year. With the caveat that if we suddenly saw ridership increase significantly and we needed to add, you know, three more buses, then we would come back to you and ask that. So questions on that or feedback? Yeah, Ellen, you can stop sharing unless, you know, people need to look back at this. Thank you.
I'm happy to make that motion if there's a second and then we can continue the conversation.
Second.
Chris, don't we first have to make a motion to suspend our rules to take a vote?
Yes, I was about to say.
I'm happy to do that.
All right, Ms. Bergstrom?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend our rules and take a vote to authorize funding for, um, additional bus for after-school transportation.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Out of vote, roll call.
Uh, yes, that is true. Please, Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The motion passes.
So now we need to make the vote.
Yes. And I believe Mr. Nixon had made the motion.
I just have one, one question. So we, we typically charge, uh, in a non-COVID year, our rate for afternoon bus passes to Mystic are a little bit higher because our costs are different. So not saying it needs to be the same as it is in any other years. I just want to be sure that we're, we're taking into account what our actual cost is, whether it's net one hundred or net thirty as it pertains to the budget. You know, the, the cost of this bus need not be the same as our home bus in the afternoon. I just want to underscore that. Um, would hope that, uh, Dr. Evans, Ms. Woodmore uses some discretion in what that fee should be given our past practice, but happy to support this.
Certainly. May, may I interject and request that the service, uh, be started effective on Monday, um, April twelfth? Due to this being, uh, later in the day on Tuesday. So we can make sure that all of the applications are received, processed correctly. We know where every, um, kiddo is going to be going on Monday afternoon and also to give, um, time to coordinate with the bus company on adding additional bus service, buses, um, as needed.
You beat me to it, Ellen.
I think that's smart and I think it gives you, you guys some time to get the right messaging out to parents about what's about to be available.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So I think it was moved and seconded, Karen, but I think you still need a vote to.
Yes, we need the vote. So I will take a roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. It is unanimous. And we will proceed apace.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, the next agenda item is the Parker's preschool update. Would you like me just to launch into that? Ms. Polonais?
If there are no further questions or concerns around return to school. I know we had discussed or we had brought up, um, need or a po, the possibility of authorizing Dr. Evans to oversee the middle school and high school return. And I, we may take that up in another meeting. We could, but I will advise that the next meeting is April twenty seventh, at which point, I guess that will be a day before they formally go back to school. So, okay.
Karen, I think as Judy said, it, it has to happen. So we, we don't have to vote it.
Exactly. So.
I would say let's just let it happen because it's going to happen.
Yes, the state has mandated that this is supposed to happen and it is not necessitated. It does not necessitate a school committee vote. So, uh, I'm just merely looking back at our March sixteenth minutes and we had authorized, as Mr. Nixon had mentioned, we authorized K through five, uh, Dr. Evans to oversee K through five. So. Okay, we will proceed apace. Uh, next order of business is indeed the Parker's capital update or Parker's update.
So just to give you a quick update on Parker's where we are, um, it looks like we'll need twenty-eight, um, classroom sections at Lynch next year, which means we need to move two classrooms, um, to another location. Uh, it makes sense to move all four of the preschool classrooms because they share staff and, and work well together, um, to another location. We are keeping the two classrooms at VO. They're very happy there. They work well there. The facility is good. We have space. So it is our plan to move four preschool classrooms to Parker, to Parker's from Lynch, beginning this fall. It requires a lot of work to get the facility ready, but the good news is that most of that work is, uh, not terribly expensive because much of the work was done before the, um, school was used as swing space for VO. And because the, um, uh, Ellen has been working diligently to make small upgrades as, uh, as, uh, budget and, um, opportunity presented itself. And so we're in pretty good shape to welcome those four classrooms. The, the major things that we're working on right now are the cleanup of the outside area, including the lower level and the area behind the building, including removing dead trees and cutting back, back branches. We're looking at, uh, the possible replacement of restroom partitions that are in poor repair, uh, painting restrooms in two of the classrooms, replacing some window panes, putting in shades and screens on the windows, installing a fence around the playground area, power washing the play structure, which has already happened or happened yesterday, I believe. Adding mulch to the play area, um, installing, uh, security cameras and, um, swipe access and intercoms for door release. One of the things that we, and we also, the elevator is nearing completion. The elevator, uh, project has not finished because of issues that we run into in every single project, connecting the electrical system or, you know, the upgrade to the electrical system, but it should be done, uh, shortly. And, um, so that'll be ready. We have, um, hired, um, uh, someone from Flensburg Architects, uh, to take a look at the site to be sure we were fully in compliance with all mandated accessibility, um, issues. And, uh, the only thing that we need to do in terms of accessibility is to ensure that there's one handicapped accessible, um, uh, bathroom, restroom on the lower level. Uh, so, uh, we're moving forward with that. But all other aspects of the building, there's also some ramp work that needs to be done to one of the exterior ramps, um, downstairs. But in general, we had budgeted for from FY twenty-one, um, some, uh, improvements to the facility that we knew would be needed for accessibility. And so we weren't sure whether we would need to move, uh, preschool here this fall or next fall. It looks, um, like we're going to be moving this fall. So in the preschool, we'll stay here for a few years until, I think, fall of twenty twenty-five, when Lynch is fully reopened. And then the whole preschool will move back to Lynch. Ellen, what did I forget in that report?
DPW has been, as always, um, Jay Gill and Peter Lawson, um, phenomenal partners, um, with this. Pete and I have been meeting, uh, weekly the past few weeks, uh, just to go over everything that we need to knock off of our list. We're treating it as we would a typical project and having our Monday morning meetings to go over where we are, um, contract. People are coming in to look at, um, providing us with quotes on all of the additional work that needs to be done. Flensburg has been out, um, and we really are pleased with, you know, that we're hopeful that we'll be able to get as much of this done as possible, um, by June thirtieth. As Dr. Evans indicated, um, the play structure was power washed yesterday. They made a minor modification to the play structure, uh, to close up a, a, um, an area where there was too large of a gap. It's designed for a student to be able to go onto the pole to slide down fireman's pole. Um, we closed that up for, uh, over safety concerns, um, raised by this preschool director. And DPW was out yesterday morning taking care of that. So we had vendors in yesterday walking the downstairs to provide us with, uh, comprehensive quotes for some work to be done. And, uh, Mr. Lawson and I are optimistic that we will be able to get the bulk of it, if not all of it, completed by June thirtieth.
So questions about that or concerns? We'll give you a more comprehensive update and some pictures and things once, you know, we're further down the road. But I think we're in good shape.
Mr. Brady?
Judy, just a quick question on the play structures. How's the accessibility on that play structure? Is there anything that needs to be done there going forward?
Ellen, do you want to answer that question?
So the, uh, structure had been, um, looked at by the preschool director and the only modification that she requested was, um, the, the, the act, the, I don't even know what to call it. So Pam, help me out with this, um, the, the opening, um, in which a child would reach across to slide down. Um, we are, yeah, it was a, this, it was about this big. We are, yeah, it was this, it was about this big, and again, concerned because it's going to be used by our littlest learners. I mean, we want to make sure that we are being as safe as possible. So a piece of plexi was put in that area yesterday, bolted into the structure, and DPW was out looking at it yesterday. I was out looking at it with them yesterday, and I was out again last night before I left just to check it out. So it, it's, it's quite tall. It goes to the very top of that opening. So unless somebody were to actually physically climb over it, there's no way a little person can get through there.
So it didn't, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
And then also working on the design for, for the, for the gates, for the playground, making sure that the gates are, we're going to have a gate right over by where the ramp is. It goes into the side of Parkhurst by the modulars, and then we'll have another gate off towards the back of the building, where the, where the kids would come out through door eight to go over to the playground. So there will be, there will definitely be a gate that goes right from the hardtop into the, into the fenced-in area.
Any other questions about Parkhurst?
At the risk of dating myself, I would just say that my eldest daughter was there at Parkhurst for kindergarten and first grade, and I well remember those play structures, and it, it makes me feel a little, it makes me feel a little happy to hear that they will be in use again. And I remember the play structure, having been one who has climbed up on it.
There you go. So we want to make it a great place for them. Yeah, we're really excited to have them here. We love having, being in a building with students. Moving on to summer programs update, is that?
Yes, that is the next order of business.
Okay. In the interest of time, I'm just going to summarize this briefly. Jen, Ellen, Emma has taken the lead on the summer academic support program and summer enrichment and EL. And then Pam manages the extended school year program. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on summer enrichment, EL, or extended school year. Those are all programs we typically run, but Jen can answer questions about the rest. As you know, there has been some concern across the nation about learning loss, and so we're trying to run a pretty robust summer academic support program. What I really like about the approach here is that it's focused on both core academics and social emotional well-being, because we know that many students have struggled with a variety of issues through the pandemic. And so the focus is to offer our existing K-5 students the opportunity to engage in one week worth of enrichment or four weeks, depending on, you know, what their interests and needs are. Each session will be grouped by grade level, hoping to offer a humanities, which would be English Language Arts and Social Studies, and social emotional learning, and then STEM, which would be science, math, technology, social emotional learning. Trying to make it as engaging as possible, vetting our rulers, social emotional principles in all sessions, and trying to include movement and outdoor activities. And we're going to offer this at no cost to students and families. The summer enrichment program is more interest-based, sort of single topic groupings, K-1, 2, 3, 4, 5, based on teachers offering things that they're passionate about, and kids offering, taking things that they're really interested in. And all of that is going to take place as well this summer. And again, open to all students pre-K to 12, summer enrichment is, and there are scholarships available for families in need. That is a parent-funded program. The English learner program is funded by district and grant funding. There's no cost to families, and extended school years, obviously, not a cost to families. So if you want to ask Jen any questions, she's been working really hard on this. Don't see any questions. Okay. If you, if, if you can think of any, please feel free to send them to Jen. I'm sure she'd be happy to answer them later. Jen, is there anything I forgot that I should have highlighted there?
Nope, sounds good.
Okay. All right, Karen, turn it back to you.
Seeing none, we will return and go on to the first reading of the updated policy, IHBEEBA on English language learners. It is generally the policy of the school committee to have two readings of policies, and I welcome Ms. Bergstrom as a member of the policy subcommittee to introduce this, please.
So thank you for sharing that part, Karen. This is our first reading of the updated policy. This is a legacy from when Mr. Vinalia and I were on the policy subcommittee. We met on March 23rd to review our English language learner policy. As you may be familiar, we've had an increase in a significant number of families for which their primary home language is something other than English, and we've begun translating all of our essential notices into the two most spoken languages, which are currently Chinese and Portuguese. The district will constantly, you know, refresh that and make sure that, over the years, those remain our two most prevalent languages. And we are also providing information on translation services for the other primary languages that members of our community might, might also be speaking. We decided that as the policy subcommittee then to review the English language learner policy, and we recommended that we actually codify this practice moving forward in our policies by adding the following paragraph, which I'll read to you very quickly here. It has been vetted by the district's attorney. So it says that "The district will automatically provide translation of notices containing essential information, including information sent out from district offices to the entire community into the two primary languages spoken after English. In addition, every written communication sent out from district offices will include information for families to seek translation into languages spoken less commonly in the district. The district will review and revise the languages it automatically provides translation for at the end of each school year, and based on requests received for translation from families inconsistent with the results of the annual home language survey." So this is just in addition to our current English language learner policy, and I'm happy to take any questions. That policy was also attached in your packet, the full policy.
Do we have any questions from the committee for Ms. Bergstrom?
So, go ahead, Karen. Okay, I was going to say, if nobody has any questions, then this is just the first read. Our practice will be to bring this back then at the school committee meeting at the end of April, and we will vote on adding this to our permanent policy handbook. Thank you.
Thank you. That was exactly what I was about to say. April 27th will be the next time that we revisit this. So now we will move on to the action items, and our first action item is around the handbook revisions. We have previously had the elementary, middle, and high school principals join us in the March 16th meeting to discuss their updates to the handbook. So Dr. Evans, do you have any comment on this?
Uh, these were generally very minor changes, mainly technical changes, dates and names. There were a few more substantive changes to the high school handbook, but I think we've vetted them all in, in pretty great detail, so I think we're ready for a vote.
Are there any questions from the committee? Mr. Brady?
Just of note, you know, I, I read through them quickly this morning, but in the elementary one, it, it refers to our meetings that we meet the, the second and fourth Tuesday of the month at 7:00 PM, so clearly we're not doing that right now. So I, I just think we should edit that section or update that because it, it's not accurate, and if this is something that, say, a parent who moves into the district reads this handbook and says, oh, great, that's when meetings are. If that's not accurate, I, I feel like it's, it's a small correction, but an important one.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nixon?
Yeah, I, I appreciate Mr. Brady's comment, and it's funny because I was just having a con, I, I remember when we were voting school committee meetings a year ago, we had a similar conversation. I think it says something on our website as well, that's kind of a legacy page. Might be more help, more appropriate, but still helpful to parents to say something like, the school committee generally meets twice a month on Tuesdays. That can still be true for Thursdays, tends to be our backup. But I would leave it to Dr. Evans to word Smith that a little bit. I think that's a good comment by Mr. Brady, and perhaps we should do, look to be sure we're consistent.
Will do.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? If not, I would entertain a motion on the handbooks, the language of which is in our packets.
And Karen, that would be with that correction?
Yes.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm happy to move. We approve the revisions as previously presented and amended this morning.
Second.
Much, very much. Roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
The chair votes aye, the vote is unanimous. The next order of business then is approval of the minutes for March 2nd, March 16th, and March 29th.
The head of chair only had one comment on the minute of the 29th. I believe the con, the content of those looked good, but I believe we actually called a order like around 12:02. That meeting was posted at noon. And then once we had all members, we moved to executive session a few minutes later, and we actually came back to public session at 1:10 for a public discussion and vote. It would just be good if we make that change, so that ties back to the posting of our meeting. Other than that, everything was fine.
I'm happy to make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't at the meeting.
Mr. Hopcroft? Thank you very much. So our vote is, oh, and I'm sorry, the chair votes aye, so. And so of our participants who have voted, we have a three, three in favor, zero against, and two abstentions. So the, the motion to pass the minutes passes. Okay. And next we will move into the chair report. So having, I will just say, having lived and worked in Japan for many years, I remember that April is a month of beginnings with schools and companies starting a new year just as the cherry blossoms come into bloom. This mild climate of April is evoked by a gentle spring breeze called the Shunpu title. So yesterday, we saw our K to five grades return fully in person for the first time since last year in March. And for me personally, seeing those excited faces of children, parents, and school staff at drop-off at VO, and then hearing stories about this from across the district make me think about these new beginnings. I also want to remember, though, that our students, some of our students are still in full remote, and how this is a challenging time for them, as there have been some bittersweet partings among students who have become good friends in their Zoom classes, but now have said goodbye with these recent transitions. So as well, we are reminded that we must also be diligent with masking as our community faces more COVID-19 cases. With that in mind, school committee will be checking in with public health for an update on the community at an upcoming meeting. And we also have town meetings starting April 27th, and I will be preparing a presentation and will welcome feedback from members. Some of our planned topics include a brief update on return to school, the Lynch and Morocco projects, and the FY22 budget. And we will also be revisiting subcommittee assignments. So I will prepare a sheet and send to all of the members with recommendations, so I invite you to please review it, and then reach out with any comments or preferences that you have. And that concludes the chair report, and I will now turn it over to the superintendent for anything further.
Think you've heard a lot from me today, so I will save further remarks for an upcoming meeting, except to thank, sincerely thank our parent groups and community partners like WIFI and INCA and Coalition for all their support this year. Almost every week I see indication that all of those groups are reaching out to particularly teachers and support staff to encourage, give little snacks, little acknowledgements. Everybody, I think, in our community is pulling together really well, and their efforts go greatly noticed and much appreciated.
Thank you. And with that, we will move into future agenda items. So right now, what we have on our list is a transportation update, and then also a fees update. And I welcome the committee to contribute any topics that they would like to see for a future agenda item.
And that's fees for 2022, right, Karen?
Yes.
Usually in the spring, we invite the chair of the pack to give a special ed, a pack special ed update.
Okay.
If they so choose to.
Mr. Nixon?
Yeah, I would like to just include a capital project update on that list. That doesn't need to be at the next meeting, but in the next, you know, two or three meetings, we'll have a lot to share.
Thank you very much. Mr. Brady?
I believe the MSBA has opened their statements of interest process, and so I'd like us to discuss the potential of submitting a statement of interest for Morocco.
Thank you very much. Is there anything else coming from the committee?
Mr. Nixon, your hand's still up. Did you have something else to add?
I was busy going around lowering hands.
Okay, I was just making sure since he was remote.
So, okay, seeing none. Our next meeting dates will be April 27th at 6:00 PM, May 4th at 9:30 AM, and May 18th at 6:00 PM. Mr. Brady, you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I would just ask that we consider moving the May 4th date that's at 9:30. I, I did happily take a personal day today to attend this meeting, but it's not going to be feasible for me to take another personal day to attend another 9:30 meeting. I'm certainly open to many other times, you know, in the early afternoon, early evening, but I, I would appreciate consideration of that.
Thank you very much. And if we have no further comments from the committee, then I would welcome a motion to adjourn.
Oh, moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Aye.
Mr. Brady?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Mr. Hopcroft?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the vote is unanimous. Thank you very much, and thank you to WinCam for all that you do and all of your support. We always appreciate you. And to all of our presenters. And to all of our presenters.